We'll give Mr. Wilson a minute to set up. Our next meeting will be two twenty-two on a Tuesday, so it's real Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
Two, 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 two.
Two, 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 two.
Tuesday, T-W-O-S-D-A-Y.
Oh, is that what it's called?
Yeah, get ready for it.
That's. Tuesday.
Those with elementary kids, it'll be a big day.
It is a big day, yeah.
Dr. Vartanian Gibbs' mission to still back in the building so she could celebrate.
Please.
I think it would be likely to get twenty-two, twenty-two.
Tuesday.
Tuesdays, yeah.
No, it's Tuesday.
Yeah, the Tuesday, two, 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 Tuesday.
Two, 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 two.
Yeah, two, two.
Two, two, twenty, twenty-two.
Two, 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 two. Very exciting. Do you want to move that chair for him? Yeah. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is seven oh-two. I am Patty McCoy. I would like to thank everybody who is in attendance here and welcome you out on this chilly evening and also welcome anyone who is watching this later at home. I would like to have the board members introduce themselves. We will start with member Christensen.
Hello, good evening. I'm Lauren Christensen. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Hi, Patrick Heo. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening, Anupam Chugsood. Thanks for being here today.
Good evening, Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out.
Good evening, Sharon Wilson.
Thank you. Superintendent Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff?
Good evening, Monica Merritt. Welcome. Thank you for coming out this evening. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, and thank her for taking our minutes at every meeting. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening, Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome, everybody.
Good evening, Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services.
Hi, I'm W P O's. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Human Resources.
All right, thank you so much. We will stand and we'll have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are on to letter A, adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda, action item twenty-two oh-two forty-one. I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve of the consent agenda, action item twenty-two oh-two forty-one.
Thank you. Can I give a second?
Second.
All right, it was moved by member Brooks and seconded by member Christensen that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, action item twenty-two oh-two forty-one. Will you take us through it, please, Superintendent Merritt?
Yes, President McCoy. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have a resolution for the new hire of a computer technician for your consideration this evening, as well as leaves and resignations. We also have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, and we have first reading of the following policies for your consideration. Policy two-two-six-zero-point-zero-three, that is our educational and racial equity policy, policy five-three-three-zero-point-zero-two opioid antagonist, and policy eight-three-three-zero student records.
All right, all in favor say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right. Dr. Vartanian Gibbs?
Thank you, President McCoy. This evening, I have the honor to introduce you to a new computer technician. Mr. Andrew Gallagher. He's going to be working for Mr. Salzer's department at Plymouth High School. He's a graduate of our school district. He is going to school right now getting a degree in cybersecurity. He has an extensive background in computer hardware and software troubleshooting. And we are very thankful that he has accepted a position in our district. We need to give him a double round of applause because he came last night to F and L thinking it was the board meeting.
Oh, no.
So. So, congratulations, Andrew. Welcome. We're so thankful you are here.
All right, thank you for choosing us. Now we are on to letter B, which is celebrating success. Always one of the best times of our evening. Member Brooks will be doing it tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Celebrating success this evening will honor Salem High School junior Jack Leiden for recently self-publishing his book titled One Hundred Days of Wisdom, A Guide to Living a Fulfilled Life Through the Eyes of a Seventeen-Year-Old. The idea for Jack's book was inspired by his own mental health journey. In the early days of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, Jack started joining, jotting down highs and lows of his days and how he was feeling during all of life's changes. He used those entries and his own experiences to fill the pages with hundred pieces of his best advice, lessons, and realizations that will help others live a more balanced and fulfilling life. One Hundred Days of Wisdom is now widely available for all audiences to enjoy and appreciate. And since its release, Jack has been featured on several local media outlets, including a feature story on Fox Two Detroit last month. I'm pleased to share some thoughts from a couple of Jack's teachers on the amazing accomplishments. Ms. Carrie Shobani, Shobani and said about Jack, I can't, I can't emphasize enough how much I appreciate Jack Leiden's enthusiasm for school kindness to classmates and overall positive attitude during our remote learning year. I reached out after I saw his book on the news, which he kindly gifted to me. As impressed as I was, I was also hard not to observe that Jack lived those lessons he shared. The contents of that book are the attributes and strategies that Jack brought to our history class. What an amazing human. And Mrs. Zachary Summit said about Jack, Jack's an excellent student. He would always come to class willing to share and listen to others. He always made the classroom a brighter place and made each class, he was a part of better. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to present Jack Leiden with the Stars Award for Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success. Thank you, Jack. Would you like to say a few words about your experiences writing the book?
Sure. Hello, I'm Jack. I never really expected this. I was just jotting some things down, like he said. I was just trying to just write it down. I've always enjoyed writing since I was little. And, I mean, like, when the pandemic first started, a lot of people said, oh, you know, two weeks, flat on the curve, and then here we are almost two years later. So, I'm just grateful we've made it this far, and I'm looking forward to writing some more books.
All right, thank you very much. It's very exciting. Just a quick commercial for it. It's available on Etsy. All right, so now we are on C, which is Board Committee Reports in Action. First up is the President's Report. We have a lot on our agenda tonight, so I'm going to pretty much just keep this quick. I appreciate the board members, all their engagement. We have all of our committee meetings. Some of them go quite long, especially now that we are in budget season and still working on the bond. That's a lot of work, so thank you so very much for all that hard work. And we're going to move on to Student Performance and Achievement Committee.
Thank you, President McCoy. We had to cancel our meeting, which was last Wednesday due to the snow day, and our topic was the topic that we're gonna actually see today, the N W E A segregated data. So, we did not reschedule that meeting since we're actually gonna go through it today. We do have our next meeting on March second at five PM in this room, so I hope you'll join us.
All right, next up is Policy Committee. We meet the second meetings of the month, so we will be meeting February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, which is a Tuesday. It's two twenty-two. So, if you have elementary children, get ready for that. And so, I would like to, however, thank Dr. Vartanian Gibbs and Dr. Lilly for all of the hard work and the whole committee on the educational and racial equity policy that we put together. They did a lot of work on this, a lot of research, and we certainly do appreciate it. So, thank you very much. And next up, we have Finance and Operations.
So, we also were delayed because of the, the snow days last week, but we were able to meet yesterday. And we went over a number of topics that we'll be reviewing here this evening, including the bid packages for High School Two update and some award recommendations as part of that. We also discussed the classroom furniture for the E L Two project. So, this is Byrd, Miller, and Smith that we'll be discussing this evening. And we got an update on some of the construction updates for those, for Byrd and Smith. We discussed the custodial staffing challenges that we've had, and we got an update from the team there, and they've made some progress. And we're cautiously optimistic. If they can continue with this progress, we will be at to a full staffing level for our custodial teams, which will help tremendously in relieving some of the burdens in the district. And lastly, we discussed our budget survey planning process. So, budget surveys will be going out momentarily, and that will be an opportunity to provide some feedback to the, to the board and to the administration on priorities that the community has for the next budget cycle, which will be ultimately passing in, in June, but this process starts now. And our next F and O meeting is Thursday, February seventeenth at five PM, and the community is welcome to attend.
All right, thank you so much. Now we are on to D, which is Administrative Reports and Recommendations. Up first, Superintendent Merritt.
Thank you, President McCoy. I always take this opportunity to lift up the accomplishments of our students, our staff, but I also don't want to miss an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of a recent alumni. And especially during this winter Olympic season, it's just a good reminder that P C C S alumni continue to do amazing things around the world. TeamUSA.org, the official website of the United States Olympic and Paralympic teams, recently published a story, "The Pool Is the Ultimate Equalizer for Emmett Martin," a feature story on Plymouth High School class graduate, twenty-twenty-one, Emmett Martin. Now, Emmett is currently a freshman on the swimming team at the University of Mount Union in Ohio, and he is a U.S. Paralympic team hopeful who is training to compete in the Paris Games in twenty-twenty-four. In his article, Emmett credits his time in high school with giving him the work ethic and belief that he could compete at the highest levels in the pool. So, shout out to Emmett, shout out to our amazing teams, teachers throughout his K-12 journey that have, that he has been inspired by to be the best that he can be. So, on behalf of the entire P C C S community, we are so proud of Emmett Martin, and we wish him the absolute best as he pursues his own Olympic dreams in the coming months and years. Just a quick reminder, our next P C C S COVID vaccination clinic will take place on Wednesday, February twenty-third. P C C S, in conjunction with the Wayne County Health Department, again, will be offering a COVID-nineteen vaccination clinic for our community. This clinic will include all CDC-approved doses for those five-year-old, years and older, and boosters for those twelve years old and up. Again, this is Wednesday, February the twenty-third, from three-thirty to five-thirty PM. This is Canton High School cafeteria across from the main office, and you're gonna ask, we're asking you to park by the flagpole. Again, if you are interested, there's a registration process that takes place on our website, and we will continue to use our social media outlets, our text functions, to make sure that we're informing and reminding our families of this partnership. With our test kits, we continue to be encouraged by the participation. Again, we as P C C S were approved to participate in the Michigan Backpack Home Test Program, and this is providing one COVID-nineteen test kit. You have two kits in each set to every staff member and every student in our district. And if you'd like to pick up a test kit during a scheduled pickup time, please complete the registration form online. Our next pickup is going to be tomorrow. That's from four to six at East Middle School. As Trustee Kejo shared, I just also wanted to share about the Community Budget Survey. It is launching this Friday. We'll plan to launch this on Friday via the official district website and social media outlet, and this survey will remain open until Friday, February the twenty-fifth. After it closes, we will reveal or review all of the feedback. We present the findings during the budget work at the remaining meetings later this year, at our regular meetings. And it's really important as we're looking for these ideas, feedbacks, in terms of what our stakeholders, our community's values, and, and really as we look at the profile of our learner and what is important for us and our students as they articulate through our program, we can have some feedback from our community as we budget, as we develop our next budget. Finally, I'm very, very excited about this next save the date opportunity, the P C C S Mental Health and Wellness Fair. We've been talking about this for a while, and it is coming together. We're announcing that this upcoming Mental Health and Wellness Fair will take place on Saturday, April the thirtieth, from ten o'clock to two o'clock. And this is in Plymouth Telog Park. This is going to be a fabulous event. It's a collaborative event. We'll have mental health care experts and agencies, keynote speakers, local businesses, and really the intent of this event is to provide information and resources to our community and help crush the stigma of mental illness. So, our goal is to support a comprehensive, holistic view of wellness, and this event will give all of our families, our youth, the opportunities to hear about issues and support that are available to them. And it's gonna be an expo-style event. This is free and open to the public for all ages. And again, in addition to meeting our local mental health experts and local businesses, there's gonna be a multitude of activities for students and families, and these are gonna be wellness-based activities such as sensory stations, therapy dogs, chair massages, sensory and activity centers, food and raffle baskets from local businesses, et cetera. I want to specifically thank our school psychologist, Kathy Grotes, and our recently retired Executive Director of Student Support Services, Student Specialized Services, Julie Woodhams, as well as our Director of Partnerships, Frank Ruggerello, who have really been instrumental in working with our communities, our partners, to make this happen on behalf of our entire school community. So, we invite everyone there, save the date. You'll have more information coming forward. Finally, as I wrap up today, I just wanted to give a brief update just on our COVID mitigation plans. We have received recent emails over the last couple of days asking about our masking policies and our plans to adjust as we move forward. So, just wanted to take this opportunity to remind our entire community that we're currently operating under the Wayne County Health Department's mask mandate. If you recall, when that mask mandate was put into effect, it did have an exit ramp to that requirement. And what has been the metric that the Wayne County Health Department has used is fourteen days in moderate. If we are in a county level of transmission for fourteen consecutive days, they would lift that mask mandate, and that would move from a requirement to a highly recommended. If you recall, in August, we approved our own mitigation plans that were really consistent with those same measures before the Wayne County Health Department came out to say that if we were in low and moderate levels of spread, that would be highly recommended. If we were in substantial or high levels of spread, that's the consideration of the mask mandate. So, at this point, that is the same metric that is in place, fourteen days, consecutive days, and moderate level or less would trigger then for the Health Department, the moving from a recommend, from a requirement to a recommendation. And so, we will continue to remain in consultation with them. I am very encouraged by our numbers. We appear to have peaked this recent surge and are headed on our way back down, and it is projected that we will head back down as rapidly as we came up in the last few weeks. And so, we'll continue to remain in consultation with our Health Department and continue to communicate with our school community about any changes that are to be made. I want to also remind, when I speak about the district mitigation plans, back in August, those plans were set for all levels of spread within our community so that people are aware, and we're not changing every few days to say this is what we're gonna happen, this is what would happen, so everyone can expect. Those are on our website. I will say that we hear of different cases, different buildings, as these are implemented, that sometimes there are some changes. Sometimes people are a little bit more extra cautious than what we may have in the district mitigation plan. And so, I always want to encourage any family, if there's something that's going on that they question, to reach out to your building principal and have that conversation. We continue to work with our building principals to just share what those district mitigation guidelines are. For example, that one, one question we had today is around sharing materials, and materials are able to be shared at a district level. That is a part of our plan, like library books, guided reading materials, papers. They don't have to be quarantined in between them. And so, we just want to make sure that there is clear understanding of those practices. Those are things that we had in place in the past and just making sure that we're working for consistency. So, again, if there is a concern, please bring it to your building principal to just help address those. And all of our plans, again, are on, on our website so that everybody is aware of what is required and what is recommended at each level of spread. So, with that, I will bring closure today, and we'll move on to next area in the agenda.
Thank you. I wanted to remind the audience that we do have a mask mandate for people who are attending this meeting. There are masks outside if you do not have one. Next up, we are at Finance and Operations with Ms. Piaz. Thank you.
Ms. McCoy, if we have a number of people in the audience that are not wearing masks, I know you've just reminded them, but it doesn't seem that they're listening.
Do the board members wear masks below their nose? Yet my child can't at school, and he's called out for it.
My mask is above my nose.
I'm sorry, you don't see my nose. It's not below my nose, sir.
So, I'd like to recommend that we move to recess, if they're not gonna put on their mask.
All right, we will go into recess.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, this is a book.
That's awesome.
Did you sign it?
Oh, yeah. Pretty good.
He signed it, didn't he?
Very good.
He signed it.
Yeah. You okay, Patty? Yeah.
I'm super excited.
I'm really excited about that.
That's so nice.
I think I took my extra copy to school.
Yeah.
I bought one.
Oh, nice.
Hey, a child's little book.
Yeah.
That was published.
Oh.
That was published.
That is nice.
There's nothing I like better than to have that kind of thing for kids to see. Is he still here?
I think he left.
My mouth is boiling on my nose. I just took my second one. I don't know what my nose is.
Yeah, it is. It is.
It has a pit. Is it this long? Put your glasses over it. That's how, yeah, there you go. There you go. Yeah.
Monica, you were, I could see that you were struggling with it, but you were, it was, I was watching.
You were trying. All right, Ms. Piaz, are you ready?
Yep.
Mr. Kejo.
So, I want to bring Brian Gessman from McCarthy and Smith up here. We're gonna talk about the H S Two projects that, that we're doing. Just to provide some context on this for everybody in the audience, we've had a bit of construction challenges with our auditorium and multipurpose room. That's the pool and multipurpose room at Plymouth High School. That's the pool and multipurpose room at Plymouth High School. Some great work that's been going on with our architects and with our construction managers. And we've got a plan to move forward and to address some of those challenges. So it will delay our overall project, but we think it will be a good process and that we can be able to move forward with a fantastic addition to the facility. And especially as Ms. Merritt spoke about, where pools and the impact that they have to the community. So Brian, do you want to?
Absolutely. Thank you for the introduction.
Talk about what we're doing.
Brian Gessman with McCarthy and Smith. We're going to open up with kind of a recap of where we came from, where we're going, and where we hope to be. So this is, I think, most of the information that everybody's kind of seen before. But because this has kind of been a long process in getting to where we're at today, I wanted to offer up some slides as a reminder. So in the top right corner, this is Plymouth High School. In the top right corner is the proposed additions. And the orange, highlighted in orange, is the natatorium, the pool and associated locker rooms and storage rooms. And then what I'll call to the north of that is the new multipurpose room area that would be part of the addition. The area in yellow is also part of the addition, but that's kind of where it kisses the existing building. So that would then become this lobby space, kind of collaboration, open space for activities and items that get scheduled within that area. Here's just kind of a couple of quick highlights, a little zoomed in version of what that multipurpose room looks like. Again, some of the associated storage rooms and ancillary mechanical, electrical rooms associated with that area. You'll see a multitude of doors entering inside and outside of that area in the events lobby, as well as into the vestibule to gain access to the multipurpose room. Here's the natatorium, which spurred a lot of good discussion with a separate diving well, separate from the lane lines, which was a big topic of conversation in the efficiency of having meetings, the ability for the district to hold certain types of events, to be able to continue to maintain pace throughout the events. Highlighted in here is the locker rooms associated with that pool deck and again, the other portion of that events lobby. This is the second floor, so this is the spectator seating. So if you were coming to see an event, this is where the spectators would sit, which is actually on top of the locker rooms from an elevated view looking down at the natatorium or down at the pool. These are renderings now, so we're looking at the renderings. We're staring right now at the multipurpose room. You'll see a new canopy to be built, which kind of brings the new entrance, if you want to, you know, activities entrance to life there and kind of identifies that as an entry point into that new vestibule entry area. Another look at that. And then again, just a couple more views. You'll see the multipurpose room and those tall windows is the exterior of the natatorium. Again, this is just showing a couple of the different entrances and exits as it relates to the new addition. So now we're standing in that events lobby. So now this separates on the, what will be the left-hand side is the existing hallway where your existing gymnasium is. And then on the right-hand side, past those set of double doors, you gain access into the locker rooms and to the natatorium and a good opportunity to display awards and banners and that kind of thing. Again, another view up on the upperhand left, that's actually the track that runs around your existing gym. So that overlooks that lobby space. And that's kind of the, that's just as a refresh on what this thing looks like. As Mr. Keogh had kind of summarized, we had some challenges getting to this point, which caused us to kind of go somewhat, not back to the drawing board, but to rethink some of our options to move forward. So some of that, we started with budget. So as we kind of discussed as part of those photos, there's a couple pieces that kind of got increased as we discussed through the development of this design, one of which is that pool size. The other couple buildings don't necessarily have that separate diving well, but in conjunction with discussion on Salem, parents, teachers, as well as coaches, as well as Canton, it's really from a holistic standpoint was a great asset to have in the district to be able to host those events and utilize those for the entire community, not only the high schools, but the middle schools, et cetera. The other change that was impacted is the student parking. So through, I don't know how far away I can get with the smartphone.
I think you might need to be closer rather than further away.
All right. Well, I was going to be at the other end of the room by the end of this thing. So I appreciate the insight. And then the other thing is the student parking. So in discussion with the principals and the coaching staff, the original location that was kind of thought of really was not the ideal location for it. And so it ended up being what is currently the student parking lot. Because it's the adjacencies to the existing building, you're able to compartmentalize those areas for athletics and different types of events. So that ended up displacing some parking that we are now, as part of this project, are planning on creating an additional parking lot to supplement that parking loss. So what that ends up being is really an amended budget that we got to increase that was not part of the original scope, but really deemed critical to the success of the project from a district standpoint. So that gave us an amended budget. These were a lot of things that we discussed at FNO. We'll obviously can continue to discuss as we go through this slide, but wanted to kind of take a minute to explain what that is and why that is. So through our discussions with FNO, we've probably been, I feel like I've been to every FNO meeting for the last couple of months, kind of talking about this and strategizing and what our options are. So as you may or may not know, we have gone out for bid previously for this. And so due to those challenges we've had, we've been faced with a tough decision on how we move forward. And the suggestion is, is based on the, actually 101, which we'll get to at the end of this presentation, 101 bids. It was determined that those contractors that are not impacted by this structural change moving forward, it's really in the district's best interest to move forward and award those contractors. They were competitively bid. They were, you know, post-bid interview to make sure that their scope was complete. But then there was a handful of others that there are significant changes that is not deemed worthy to request to move into contracts with. And so what we're suggesting today is there is a proposed award following this presentation of approximately $9.8 million, which is of the really critical, non-impacted scopes of work. So that's mechanical, electrical, plumbing, site work, underground utilities, you know, those major contracts, to have those awarded at this point, which would show us a theoretic budget remaining of about 4.4. So what are the ones that we would have to go back out on the street for, so to speak? What would we have to rebid or bid out? That's masonry, steel, carpentry, roofing, metal studs and drywall, acoustical treatments, painting, telescoping, bleachers, fire suppression. So all in total, the masonry and steel is the biggest change, right? Once upon a time, we were going to work with a precast contractor, that ultimately that did not work out. So our best foot forward and to be able to ensure that we can get competitive pricing is to go to that masonry, steel structure. So we reached out to trade partners to get solid estimates on, not necessarily quotes at this point, but solid estimates on what those numbers will be so we can make a conscious decision on how to move forward and what that impact might be. The rest of the numbers were based off of previous bids received. So again, a pretty good indication of what those numbers will total to be. So it does total to approximately $6.1 million in, you know, contracts that would be outstanding, that would be bid at a later date when the final revisions to the structural components are complete. So this is, again, is a kind of a highlight snapshot of where we were and where we're going to go. So once upon a time, we had intended on starting work in December 2021. Due to these issues, we've had to reconvene, recompartmentalize and come up with a good strategy to move forward. So that strategy would basically have a start in lieu of December of 2021, would be to start in basically this summer, summer of 2022, which would extend the construction basically out till September of 2024. Kind of in tandem with this project is the band room. You may or may not recall, once we first started, there was, again, suggestions and discussions on what that band room would look like and how is that best serve the district. So at that point in time, that ended up becoming somewhat of a separate project because it required a little bit more discussion to really understand, how is this space going to be used and how can we best build that space to accommodate the activities that need to take place? So you can see where that kind of would fit on the bar chart, so to speak, as part of this construction process, but would be a separate bidding effort entirely.
So to provide some additional context around this, there's been a lot of discussion that we've had and a lot of challenges that we've had in the process. And we're comfortable with this new process. It's a more traditional building structure, but it also opens us up to additional bidders and different organizations that can support the process. There are some substantial cost increases that we've been seeing for these kinds of projects. If we look at our elementary projects that we did, EL1, we saw substantial cost savings. Whereas for the high school one and high school two, we're starting to see some costs that go over what our initial budget estimates were. As we look at the total savings across these three projects that we've done so far, we're still in a reasonable position, maybe slightly over budget as compared to what we'd originally intended. And this is a 10-year bond program. So this will take us a long time before we build all the projects and even our needs might change as we go forward in this, as we've seen happen in this particular project. At the FNO committee, we discuss this extensively and in conjunction with our construction manager and it's in the administration. We believe that it's best for us to move forward with the bids that we've received because there is still some volatility out there in the market space. And we'd like to lock in these contractors that are comfortable with these bids in this process. So that's what we're asking for as part of this work, just to share with you where we're at with the project and where we're going with it. And just the last thing I would mention is it's not unusual for this district to bid projects in multiple tranches like this. When we built Plymouth High School, we built it in multiple tranches as like this. We prefer to have everything all together as one, but this is not unusual for us either.
Ms. Christensen, do you have any questions?
No questions. Like, like, um, member Keogh mentioned, I'm a member of the FNO committee. So we talked about this at length last night. Just thank you for the presentation and thank you for the added clarity for everyone in the room.
Patrick, do you have anything else?
No.
All right. Just checking. Ms. Doo?
No questions.
All right. Mr. Wilson?
No questions.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
All right. I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to remind the community that one of the reasons for the pool is that we lost a pool when we sold Central Middle School. And so this will also help to support the middle school swim program. When we were going through the bond program and we were trying to figure out what exactly we wanted to put into it, the middle school principals were very collaborative in working with this. And they did not, like, try to, because the pool was partly to support their programs, they were not really trying to fight to have it at one of their schools. They were, just wanted a pool that everybody could use. So that's part of the reason for the pool also and the tracks.
Thank you for clarifying that. So it's not only the pool, it's the tracks, it's the other additions that we're doing at the piece of campus. They're supporting both the middle school and the high school programs. Thank you for clarifying that. I remembered it earlier and forgot to mention it.
Yeah. It was a big thing because, you know, our middle school programs, we need to support those students also. But thank you very much. All right. So the next up is Consider Resolution for Bid Package HS2 Plymouth High School Natatorium First Reading.
So that was what we just talked about.
Yeah, that's what we just did. Well, just because we had the presentation.
So actually, I ask a question for our fellow board members here and see if you have any questions on this. One of the things that we'd like to potentially consider is to make this a first and final. If you believe that we need to have more discussion or review this further, we could, we could bring this back as part of the normal course. But given the fact that these bids that we've, that we've socialized with the bidders, they're not required to accept them. They had a 90-day period of time that they had to accept them and we're outside of that. We have their commitment, but there's no contractual process. So if we were able to move this to a first and final, we'd be able to lock in the prices for the section that we're talking about here. But I totally understand if people want some additional time to discuss or think about this, we can bring it back again.
I'd like a little bit more time.
Yeah. So given the amount, it makes sense.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you. Um, next up, we have EL2 Classroom Furniture Update Presentation.
Mr. Dinkaloo is here from TMP, our architectural firm. And he's going to give us a brief presentation on what we're considering for Byrd, Miller, Smith for the next furniture buy, for the next group of elementary buildings to start this summer. Mr. Dinkaloo?
Thank you. So I'll just start real quick with mentioning that the EL2 furniture that we're going through is based on conversations we had in EL1, where we talked with school staff, parents, district staff, and worked through ideas on the furniture, looked at different furniture that then landed on the furniture that we're looking at here. The other item before I jump into it that I want to mention is that we want to make sure that we're ordering this furniture in time or to give us the best shot at having the furniture in August to get installed before school started. And to do that, we really need to prioritize the classrooms. Because remember, at these three schools, we're putting furniture in classrooms that we're not doing a lot of construction in. So the idea is to try to get those classrooms outfitted for the beginning of school. So with that in mind, we're prioritizing, first off, the desks and the chairs, the teacher stations, the mobile storage, the kidney horseshoe tables and area rugs that go into the classrooms. And then we'll be coming back probably a month later with furniture that will be in other spaces, especially the newer spaces in the additions of these buildings. So like I mentioned, we took feedback from EL1 and worked it into our EL2 response. And then just going through the schools, when we're talking about the classrooms, we're really talking about trying to do 25 to 31 student desks depending on the classroom. We look at, we look at each classroom in each building to kind of see how that fits. And so you can see here at Byrd, you know, this is the smallest classroom where, in a layout with 25, and you can see, so. So we're also looking at not only how we want to set up the furniture now with three-foot spacing, but as we go through this, you'll also see these desks are flexible and movable. So, you know, when we don't have this three-foot requirement, they can start to get grouped back together again. So, you know, 25 obviously fits very well into classrooms. 31, again, at that three feet, gets a little bit tighter, but it does fit. And you'll also notice, you know, we still fit in the teacher desk up in the right, upper right there and then a couple of storage, mobile storage carts in there as well. And then, like I mentioned, we wanted to give everybody a sense of what this would also look like in the future when we start to bring groups back together for collaboration. And here, we can start to fit in that horseshoe table with six students. And then this is a more typical, so we started with those smaller classrooms. This is more typical at Byrd where we can fit in the, an area rug as well. And then a more typical with the 31 desks. And then there are some that are large enough to have plenty of elbow room. And so we ran through layouts for that. And then also at these schools, in the additions, we have art rooms. So in this, in this grouping is also tables, group tables and chairs or stools, I should say, in the art room as well as the teacher desk. Miller is different than Byrd and Smith. You know, Byrd and Smith, those schools are pretty similar. Miller is not, as you can see. But again, we wanted, at all these schools, we want to go through and kind of look at how the furniture is going to fit in each space, both at 25 desks and at 31 desks. And grouped together as well. And then, so that... And then, so that, those were the smallest classrooms at Miller, and it just, there's larger ones, and you know, we get a little bit more elbow room as we go to the larger, and this is sort of the largest layout at Miller, 25 and then 31. And then their art room, again, is in the addition, so it's very similar to the Byrd and the Smith. And then, Smith is, you know, almost exactly the different types of classrooms at Smith are really the same as Byrd, so. And then, just, you know, that's how everything lays out. For those of you who may have not seen this in the past, you know, we have the mobile student desks, adjustable heights, casters, very durable, and storage underneath, so that's going to allow these tables to be used in really any classroom, any grade level, and be able to get moved around and be durable. One of the things that we changed or that we're trying to improve on from EL one is that the kindergarten and first grade students really needed a little bit smaller chair. So we're going to do three sizes, three sizes of chairs, 14-inch for the younger, 16-inch and then 18-inch for the oldest in there. And then, because the idea is to be able to use these, move them around the schools, move them around to different schools, we wanted to have neutral colors, but we did do a little bit of variation in color, so it was easy to tell what's a, the 16 and the 18.
Oh, my goodness.
The 16 and the 18 are the ones that are sometimes hard to tell apart, so we'll have navy for the 14, black for the 16, and gray for the 18. And then, just two different types of group tables depending on the size of the room, and then the area rugs. For these three schools, the principals want rugs for most of the classrooms, even the older kids, so we were working with them to make sure that they get the right amount that they need there. And then the mobile storage carts that can be moved around. Oh, I should point out that Miller has a lot of built-in storage, so they've requested to not have the mobile storage so that it's not cluttering their room, their rooms, so. And then the teacher stations, which are the same as what we were doing in EL one. So, are there any questions on sort of the layouts or the furniture that we're suggesting?
I just want to make a comment on procedures. Normally, this would come forward as a first read, and then we would bring it back for a second read. In this place, we had some requests yesterday at the FNO meeting to make some adjustments on the number of chairs that were ordered. So for example, with the kindergarten chairs, we wanted to have us order more of those now so we could switch those out with the ones that were done in the EL one project, so we could do those ones that we had done with the EL one project as well as some other minor adjustments. So we don't actually have a, the financial package for the reading here this evening, so we're hoping to bring this back. We're hoping to bring this back in two weeks with the same concepts, but with the specific details on the quantities and the unit prices associated with that for our first and final read. So take that in consideration as we talk about the process right now.
All right. Mr. Christensen?
Yeah, we talked about this again at length yesterday evening. I just want to have a few comments. I think it's really smart that we're able to learn from some of our findings from EL one, since we're not implementing furniture district-wide at all the elementary schools, it gives us an opportunity to learn what worked, what didn't, adjust a little bit. So I see that we're doing that in this EL two package, for example. Like you said, the supplemental storage, because you know, the finding was the bookbox was a little too small, or the desk size was a little too large, and we're, you know, shrinking that up by an inch, you know, so that's a little bit more flexible and mobile for reconfiguring. I think it's great that, yes, we're showing the layouts right now to support our physical distancing, however, we know that this is not our forever, and that we want our kids to come back together and be collaborative, and this furniture allows us to do so, so I appreciate you showing kind of both layouts and how this furniture does satisfy that. I think moving forward, though, I would love for all of us, design team and administration, to consider how the furniture really aligns with our dynamic plan. So we talked a lot about this last night, too. So thinking about, a lot of this looks pretty traditional, in all honesty, so thinking about being more student-centered, for example, or being innovative, I got to pull up our dynamic plan, so I'm using the right language here, leader in educational innovation, so really thinking about furniture as a tool for learning and for our students. And again, because we're only so far in the bond, we have the opportunity to, I think, layer on to this foundation that we've already started, and it's an investment, so I'm really excited to see where we go, and seeing those, you know, seeing what comes next, really.
Mr. Kehoe?
Just a couple other things to layer on top of what Mr. Christensen talked about, because we talked extensively about this yesterday. One of the things that's nice about these desks is they're adjustable, so they can adjust in height to all the different grades, and at many of the grade levels, when you take them up to the highest height, they become essentially a standing desk. And we know that these are not ideal furniture for what we would do in a non-COVID world, but we have enough flexibility with the process right now that we think that this can support the process that we're doing, as well as meet the distancing requirements that we didn't expect to be even in right now. The other thing that I would make sure that I tell you guys, as well as everybody else, we discussed that this is not the only time you get a chance to make furniture decisions. If a school needs to make adjustments in the furniture, we have the flexibility to be able to do that. It's not a blank check, but this is not the only time that we have to do this. So if we see different changes that we need to make in a particular school, especially at these early elementaries that we're doing these construction projects on, we can roll those out at a later date and make those adjustments. So, and we will do that, and that's one of the things that's been really great about the collaborative process that's gone on between our operations teams and our facilities groups and the teaching and learning teams, is keeping that open mind as part of the process, so.
Can I add to that?
Please, go ahead.
Thank God. So we know that Phase Two from the, this second furniture package is really going to be the areas where we're renovating, like the Learning Commons and other spaces, and you know, we spoke about how that's a great opportunity to pilot or showcase some of those maybe more non-traditional furniture pieces to support learning, so that could be another thing that we feed forward, that you could see trickle into the classroom, too. So it's a great opportunity, but I wanted to add that.
And lastly, I just want to thank the community for their support with these bond programs, because it's going to touch every single one of our buildings, and they're really going to help make a difference in our students' educational environment.
Ms. Doo?
Yes, thank you. Couple of questions with regard to feedback from students and staff. Were they able to test out the furniture in any way or give input into what they wanted and needed?
Yes, so when we started the EL one process, we did get samples of all the furniture that we were talking about, and at that point, that was at Tanger, I think, and people came in and were able to see what it looked like. And then, we've gotten feedback from the EL one schools, what worked, what didn't work, but we also had some extra furniture from that buy, that, so that at these EL two schools, they were able to set up a classroom at each school. And I should say, it's a classroom's worth of furniture, because they actually moved it around to different classrooms and tested it out, and from what I've heard is that those EL two schools, they don't want to give up, you know, it's only one classroom's worth, but they don't want to give it up. They want to, you know, keep spending time with it and figuring it out, so.
So towards that point, we, that's one of the things that had us go from a 28 and a half-inch desk to a 27-inch desk, is when they saw it actually in the classrooms, they saw that they needed to have something slightly smaller.
Okay.
So it was very much student and staff-centered in that process.
But with regard to picking out the overall design or the type of desk, so I see that you brought them in and you tested it out, was there any feedback from a larger community to say, what are the ideas and possibilities in having people select that?
So I think that in the EL one process, there was a collective group that had a number of staff and community members and other groups as part of that.
Yeah, that's, so of those four schools, they picked staff to be a part of our conversations and to be able to look at the samples that we had. They picked parents, and I think they had some students as well, and then, as well as the district staff that were involved in all those meetings.
Great, that's really good to hear, as long as there's a process where people are giving input and trying things out based on what they need. My other question is with regard to the type of furniture, in terms of what we have in other buildings, so I look at Liberty, and some of the desks that they have have those dry erase tops. Was there any thought to whether to get that kind of furniture or to not get it, and what was the rationale behind not getting it?
So in the classrooms, there was, it was decided not to do that. We actually have some of those in some of the collaboration spaces in EL two, so that's definitely something that's sort of getting tested out and piloted.
Okay.
So both the media centers and then the collaboration space have some items that are, you know, more flexible, more.
Versatile and.
More versatile, more collaboration-based, I would say, that we're testing out, and so the hope is as we, you know, continue down the road, if people are, teachers are feeling like they could use that in their classrooms, we're certainly open to that conversation.
Okay, great.
There were some custodial challenges with the dry erase ones.
Okay.
It's gotten better with new cleaning materials, but it created a real mess in the classroom, so there was, both the educators and the custodians were not.
Not happy with it.
Not happy.
Okay. Fair enough. All right, thank you, that's all. Mr. Wilson?
No questions.
Mr. Brooks?
You had a question on the carpeting in this, in the one elementary school. I see that there's like circles and discs. Was there any thought for like social distancing measurements for like this type of carpeting, or is it just wherever they place them, for any future if we ever have to deal with social distancing in a classroom?
Well, you know, those rugs are really sort of a standard pattern. You know, you're not, you're not really selecting the circles, and you know, when we were getting into this, we were sort of thinking forward, and the idea with the circles is that in circle time or floor time at the beginning of school, to be able to have a space for each student is helpful. And so just during COVID, you know, you might have to space them out by a circle or whatever, but.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering if there's any thought to the distances between the centers of the circle.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, for those, they're not custom rugs, so there's not the ability to do that.
And also, like these, the half-circle desks and the larger desks, I was just wondering if we could use those in the future by either eliminating some of the chairs in it, or every spot you see a chair, there's a numerical distance between the middles of them that would, that would support like social distancing.
Yeah, yeah, it's more of an operational procedure where if you needed to not put the kids closer, you'd only have three kids there and have them spread out instead of the six that they seat.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
So, Member Christensen got my concerns about the thing. I like that you're getting the different-sized chairs, that's going to be really helpful. There's, you know, little kids on a big chair, or big kids on a little tiny chair, it's not work well. But I did have a question about the desks. So Member Kehoe was saying that if you raise them up, they're kind of a standing desk? How easy is that to do?
So those desks are fairly easy, they don't need a tool, and that's one reason why those desks were selected, you know, that it's just sort of a push button.
Okay.
Move up and down, so.
To be clear, though, they're not designed to like switch during the middle of the day for by students as that part of process. Those would be things that we might consider in future scenarios, and it's certainly one of the things that Member Christensen had brought up, but they're easy to do, but they're not something that you can do like, you know, between the morning and the afternoon and back again.
That was kind of my question.
Yeah, I thought that's where you were going, that's why I tried to clarify.
Yeah, okay. So maybe we could consider having some standing desks in the future, because some children do prefer to stand, and they think better that way, if we're going to start getting some more flexible, you know, innovative ideas?
Big discussion at FNO yesterday.
Okay.
But great, I'm glad to hear it echoed here, especially from a teacher.
Yeah, and you know, the furniture that we do have does have a little bit, so we can't, we can do a little bit of the standing, we can't do it as much, but the chairs have a little bit of play to them, so there's a little bit more movement, and then we have, I think in the next grouping, we'll have some of the stools that have some movement in them as well, so you know, we're definitely introducing those ideas.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, we have action item 220242. Consider Approval of a Resolution for Bid Package HS one, Stage Equipment and Vertical Platform, Final Reading. We did go through this last meeting. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package HS one, stage equipment and vertical platform, final reading, action item 220242.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks, that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package HS one, stage equipment and vertical platform, final reading, 220242. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right. Then the next action item is 220243. Consider Approval of Resolution for Bid Package, one five? T five, sorry. Award Structured Cabling E-Rate, Final Reading. We also went through this at our last meeting. Does anybody have any questions? No? All right.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package T five, Award Structured Cabling E-Rate, action item 220243, Final Reading.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks, action item 220243. Consider Approval of a Resolution for Bid Package T five, Award Structured Cabling E-Rate. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Say no? All right. Now we are down to action item 220244. Consider Approval of a Resolution for Bid Package T two, Audio Visual and Other Technology Needs at Salem High School, Final Reading. Does anybody have any questions on this? All right, I'm looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid package T two, Audio Visual and Other Technology Needs at Salem High School, Final Reading, action item 220244.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks, action item 220244. Consider Approval of Resolution for Bid Package T two, Audio Visual and Other Technology Needs at Salem High School. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right. Now we are on to Teaching and Learning with Ms. Rail.
For our first item tonight is the consideration of a first reading around a proposed Business Academy courses. So you will remember back in the 1920, or 2019, 2020 academic year, we collaborated with Schoolcraft College and Wayne State University to launch a collaborative business academy at our high school. The business academy allows P C C S students to take both high school courses and post-secondary courses during their time on camp on campus here, sorry, excuse me. Enrollment, student enrollment began in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. During that time, we worked collaboratively with Schoolcraft to create the first two courses for the business academy, which are done in collaboration with our university, our college, our post-secondary partner, to ensure that they meet the criteria for college credit. So tonight, for your consideration, the first read and some conversation is the next pieces in this puzzle. So three additional courses that are being proposed for the business academy pathway. Those courses are business academy marketing. Although we currently offer a marketing course at P C S, the course requirements for Schoolcraft College and ultimately Wayne State University require some additional things around sales, entrepreneurship, some additional pieces, a more heavier emphasis on advertising and marketing, technology, sales, econ, all of the different things located in here. So for this course, students would gain a deeper appreciation of the challenges that advertisers face in trying to reach target marketing and audiences. And our students would need access to the textbook that is required by Schoolcraft College. Normally, when we come before you, we talk about a variety of textbooks that we review and look at to determine best fit. In the case when we're working with a collaborative post-secondary partner, there is a required course textbook to meet the criteria from them. So in this case, for business academy and marketing, the textbook is Advertising and Promotion, An Integrated Marketing Communications Perspective by McGraw-Hill. We would require thirty-five copies of this text and it would be a total cost of for that course alone for four thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. The second course is Advanced Marketing, Sales and Service. During their third year in the business academy, our students would enroll in this course and the course would focus on the underlying consumer behavioral and e-commerce. So think about today's kind of sales and marketing aspects, e-commerce is a huge piece. Specific topics would be around psychology, sociology and anthropology concepts related to how companies learn about consumers and how do they attract customers. So our students would explore buying actions and how they're influenced by marketing. The required textbooks for this is are two, Consumer Behavior by Cengage Learning and E-Commerce twenty nineteen, copyright by Savas. Thirty-five copies of each textbook would be required at a cost of seven thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents for the Cengage book, seven thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents for the Savas book. The third and final course being proposed is the Business Academy Marketing Capstone. The course allows students to utilize the knowledge that they've gained in their previous three years of study and to employ critical thinking skills to research, write and present a business plan. During the course, students would evaluate their needs and demands for various products and services, use evidence to develop and propose a plan. So a traditional business plan format would be utilized and it would incorporate all of the kind of traditional things you see in a business plan. Additionally, students would participate in a service learning practicum during this course in order to acquire useful skills and gain practical experience. There is no course required or no course textbook required for this course. So I'll entertain any questions you might have as we look at the first kind of iteration that you've seen of this.
And I'll just add that this was discussed thoroughly in Student Performance and Achievement Committee with the community members present. And we had great discussion about the type of textbooks and particularly the capstone course, which sounds really exciting given that students are able to put all that learning together with a final project. And my understanding is there would be some interaction with local businesses for feedback and mentorship. So it's really exciting.
We're working collaboratively between teaching and learning and communications and marketing, especially through the lens of Frank Ruggieroello, our Director of Partnerships and External Affairs, to work with community partners to engage in externships and internships for our students so that they put those practical skills to to work in the during the capstone course and throughout their actual business academy experience.
Mr. Christensen?
I don't have any questions, I'm just really excited about these these new courses, thank you.
Mr. Kehoe?
Very excited about the program, are ebooks included?
We talked about that and they were not at that point.
So.
So what's the cost to add ebooks?
If ebooks are available, they would be included in the cost from our learning partners, but the the challenge is whether or not they are available. So we'll continue to work with those organizations to see if they will give us access in the future as well. And I know Dr. Brady kind of can talk to this as well because she was doing some follow-up on that as well. So come on, you can come on up here.
Okay, just trying to understand, so it's.
Yep.
It's the price would include ebooks if they're available, but.
Right, good evening. The price would include ebooks if available, but sometimes when you look at K twelve education, I know we've recently brought social studies, for example, before you, all of those pieces are included. It doesn't always work that way in higher education, so if it's available, of course, but it might not be.
Yep, and do we know if they're available or we just?
I would need to look at that, I can certainly get that information for you from the the people who are running the business academy.
Great, if we could get that in board notes, that'd be great because I mean, with the investment that we've made in one-to-one devices and students, you know, getting so many of the materials electronically, it'd be good if we.
Absolutely.
At least just know whether it's available. I'm not trying to change the, wouldn't change my vote or any of the criteria, these are the right books for us, but it would be good if we could get those.
And you know, we are deeply committed as a teaching and learning team to equity and access for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
No questions.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, I was wondering if these books are the same books that they would use normally use at the Schoolcraft College or?
Yes, they are the exact same resources used at Schoolcraft College in these courses.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't have any questions, I'm just really excited about how this program is growing. It's very exciting to offer our students more options and especially when they can take things in high school that would be applicable to college. It's always a good thing for our students to do that, thank you so much.
Thank you. So the second of our items tonight is to, and I actually I'll hand this one back to you, President McCoyn, for the approval, consider approval of the resolution, final reading for early middle college.
So the next item we have is action item twenty-two oh two forty-five, consider approval of a resolution for the early middle college, final reading. Did anybody have any questions, we did discuss this at our last meeting?
The resolution in the board packet says first reading, but then says final reading in the upper corner, so I don't know if we need to make that correction.
Yes, it should say final.
Subject there says first reading.
Oh, it does say first reading. We could get that changed.
It does say final reading in the upper right corner.
Yes, it says final reading.
Yes.
It just says first reading in the actual resolution, so.
Well, they look at that, this is another one of those things that we discussed thoroughly in Student Performance and Achievement Committee and the. And got a lot of excitement about this program and I think we had a lot of conversation during the last board meeting about the program. And I invite my board colleagues to join me in SPA so we can talk about more of these exciting programs. Looking for a member.
Oh, you're looking for a member, I see.
You're looking for a member of SPA? And so this is the resolution up here, if you have not seen it. So if you haven't seen this and you weren't, did not hear the discussion, in five years, students would have sixty transferable college credits, associate's degree or professional certification, and they've graduated from high school. So done about two years of college and high school within the five years, which is like a huge time and money save of all that tuition and everything else that they do. Did anybody have any more questions or discussion about this? All right, I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we approve action item number twenty-two dash zero two dash forty-five. Consider approval of a resolution for the early middle college, final reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Members To Do and seconded by Member Wilson. That we consider approval of a resolution for the early middle college, final reading, action item twenty-two oh two forty-five. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right, thank you. And then next up we have N W E A disaggregated data.
And I'm going to invite members of the teaching and learning team to join us up here, so we're going to take just a minute to do a couple, a little bit of shifting because we're going to have a comprehensive look at this through multiple lenses, through all of our different areas of support.
Early middle college, what a fantastic, isn't it wonderful? Do I slide that point now? Two years of college? And it's up to Wayne State's business program. So you've already completed two years of business program. Going to Wayne State. How are you two years? You're halfway done. You've had some support getting through like the first. Difficult time of trying to get it together, like, it's amazing. So excited about it. Especially for first generation, first generation college students, that's, that's where it really makes a difference. Yeah.
All right, I think we're pretty much settled in, if we're ready to begin. So during tonight's presentation, we are going to share the work that has previously been done and is currently taking place in P C C S to address our gaps in performance for specific demographic groups. I will personally begin with a short history of this critically important work. During that, following that overview, Anthony Ruella, our Executive Director of Middle School Data and School Improvement, will then share the work that is taken or will then unpack our data and share the disaggregation of our most recent N W A. Members of the Teaching and Learning Department, which you'll see here, will then share work that has taken place over the last two years specifically and our next steps moving forward as we work to eradicate these gaps. During tonight's presentations, not all members of teaching and learning will be presenting, but all members are represented in this work. And in a minute, I'm going to introduce all of the members of teaching and learning, including our curriculum and instruction coordin, our curriculum coordinators, to the group and to the community so that everybody knows who's here. And then at the very end of the presentation, we are all available for questions from the Board of Education. As we share this work through the lens of every level, early childhood, elementary, middle and high school, please understand this work is, this work is a collaborative effort of all members of our team. Before I launch into the perspective from historical perspective, I want to introduce the team members who are here tonight and just have them recognize, have them be recognized by just indicating who they are. Dana Jones, Director of Early Childhood Programs. Dr. Deirdre Brady, Director of Curriculum and Professional Development. Dr. Denise Lilly, Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Kimberly May, Director of State and Federal Programs. Hal Heard, Director of High School Education. Maureen Malloy, Director of Elementary Education. Anthony Ruella, who I introduced earlier and who I usually fumble around on his job title, so I wrote it all down for everybody this time. Mark Salzer, Director of Integrated Technology Systems. Tracy Johnson, Executive Director of Specialized Student Services. And joining us also tonight are our curriculum coordinators, Carrie Fromm, Curriculum Coordinator for E L A and Media. Rania Hamud, Curriculum Coordinator for Social Studies, World Languages and School Climate. Tanya McCrane, Curriculum Coordinator for Science and Physical Education. And Kathy Williams, Coordinator for Math and V A P A, Virtual and Performing Arts. So let's talk historically a little bit about the perspective of what has been done in the past. Then we'll talk about what are we seeing from the impacts of that work or are we not seeing from the impacts of that work? What are we doing, what's the data showing us now and what are we doing next? My mic keeps cutting in and out, I think, so. So throughout the course of several years, P C C S has done much work in this area. One area of focus has been the curriculum development cycle. Although curriculum work took place for generations, well beyond before twenty eighteen, in twenty eighteen, the alignment of a curriculum development cycle began so that we could ensure that all curricular areas were looked at on a regular basis and we looked through the lens of are we supporting our students through all of the standards that we're supposed to be, that they need to be successful? What are the curriculum resources we have in place? And that work culminates as we come before you, as we do curriculum review and we share with you recommendations and you help to support our students in the district. The implementation of N W A in twenty twelve helped us give actionable classroom data disaggregated to the student level and disaggregated to group levels for us so that we could do instructional practice change in our classrooms based on data for our students in real time. Oftentimes, what you see, and we've talked about it with state level reporting, is you get data so far in the future that it's hard to act on that data. The N W A allows teachers to make instructional decisions tomorrow based on the data from today's tests. The B A S or Benchmark, the B A S or Benchmark Assessment System is a system that we use to determine individual students' instructional and independent reading levels. This also helps form the basis for our students' I R I Ps, which are Individualized Reading Improvement Plans. So you've heard about those more often in context of third grade reading law than anything else. But most importantly, they give us actionable, real-time data to help support our students in their literacy skills. Culturally proficient instruction conferences began in twenty fourteen and continue to the present. In its initial framing, this professional development experience was a full-day experience for staff. That includes, that that continues to this day, but one of the unintended consequences of doing a single full day at times was there became, for some people, a perspect, a perception that this work only happens at certain times. One of the things you'll hear Dr. Brady discuss is the shift to intentional embedding of culturally responsive instructional practices in all of our professional learning experiences as well as social emotional learning competencies and student engagement work. Restorative Practices Training began in twenty fifteen and continues to the present. And this helps us build community and sustain relationships in classrooms and also helps us shift from a more punitive disciplinary situation to more inclusive practices as we look at how to help our students learn management skills and self-regulation behavior in classrooms. Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, or PSYOP training, most specifically used to help support our students who are identified as English learners, began to be implemented by the district in twenty fourteen and continues. Professional learning community structures began in two thousand and five. This collaborative work happens between educators collectively and includes collective inquiry and action research to help collaborative teams determine things that they want to do in classrooms with students. So we look at data, we decide of, decide strategies we want to use, we implement them, we get results, we reflect on those results. And then we either shift to practices that are more effective or we continue to implement those practices. We've talked a lot in the last few months about summer programming. In twenty seventeen, we began a shift as a district to more inclusive and more integrated curriculum units in our summer academy program. Our summer academy program is for students who are identified as having additional risk factors and additional academic needs and social emotional needs. So in twenty seventeen, we began implementing integrated STEM units for grades one through five in our summer programming. And at the middle school level in twenty eighteen, we implemented middle school E L A thematic units with a social justice focus. This was done based on high interest conversations and feedback from students about things that they were interested in learning more about and supporting them better. Additional interventions and supports that have been put into place include K five reading and math intervention, academic support classes at our middle and high schools, multi-tiered system of support framework. We've talked at times and over throughout many conversations around what's known as tier one implementation strategies. In other words, solid, high-quality, rigorous teaching and learning strategies in the classroom and how that supports all students. Some students need a little bit more, so the tier two supports are generally small group interventions, some additional support structures built around that, and then tier three intervention. Categorical classrooms shifted from self-contained to more inclusive environments to help our students with IEPs learn in environments with their grade-level peers more often. And EL programming continues. Initial instructional coaching began in our district with two coaches. We currently have 12 individuals who are acting as coaches either full-time or as a part of their day at PCCS. Summer programming expansions. Additional EL support began in 2019 and continues to the present. Much of this work has been a collaborative amplification of the current units that we talked about previously. EL Jump Start began in 2018, and EL Jump Start includes oral language and literacy development for our students who are identified as English learners. Additional programs for students with IEPs were also implemented 2019 to the present, including things like MobiMax for literacy skills. We also work really strategically and attentionally to break down barriers to access for our students, streamlining one-to-one device distribution and access for our students, and developing creative solutions to ensure equitable access, especially during the pandemic. Standardized a single district learning management system that includes built-in supports. We talked a lot about Canvas in the past, but one of the things I think we didn't elevate enough was the fact that it has language translators built into the system to help support literacy, to support access to our students who are multilingual or who are students who are English learners. Continued review and fine-tuning of our digital script subscriptions such as Google Read and Write. And again, our Technology Department, instead of, like many places you'll see, do not work in isolation but work collaboratively with all of our departments in Teaching and Learning. So as we get ready to transition to a review of the disaggregated NWA data, I want to remind the community that we reviewed the aggregate data in our December 7, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Key findings from that data, and I apologize because I'm going to read these, were, in reading, we had an overall student fall achievement in grades K-8 aligned with our historical performance. There was an increase in our above-average fall achievement in grades one through five. There was a decrease in fall achievement in our grades six through eight from last year. In math, we had an overall increase in fall achievement in grades K-8 as compared to last year. There was a, there has been a steady increase in above-average fall achievement in grades, in first grade over the past four years, and there was an increase in fall achievement in grades two through eight from last year. In short, through the investments that we noted previously and the dedicated intentional work of our instructional staff, our students on the whole, because in a minute we're going to talk about our disaggregation, did not experience steep declines that we have seen demonstrated across the nation. For example, according to a report released in January 2022 and using data for more than 5.4 million students in grades three through eight who took the NWA MAP growth test, researchers from NWA and the University of Virginia found overall achievement scores in the fall of 2021 fell by approximately five to 10 percentile points in both math and reading. This depended on the grade level, but this compared scores in the fall of 2019 before the pandemic hit. In contrast, our students' aggregate performance as a whole in reading and math remained relatively stable during this time. Although our data indicates that we did not see as great of effect on our aggregate student performance from the pandemic as others across the nation did, our reality is that this pandemic did have a disproportionately negative impact on the academic performance of many of our historically marginalized populations, especially our Black students. The dual pandemic of ongoing incidents of racism in our society and COVID-19 has deeply affected our students of color, and we have much more work to do to eradicate our gaps in performance for our demographic groups. With that, I'm going to pass it over to Anthony, who's going to share with you what we find in this year's disaggregated data.
Thanks, Beth. This is definitely a weird perspective for me. So I'm going to do my best to work my notes and the clicker and a side-eye to the presentation. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, the data portion of our presentation will provide an overview of our progress on the benchmark assessment goals as required by Section 98B of Public Act 48 of 2021. In addition, we'll take a look at our fall and, fall 2021 NWEA achievement and growth scores disaggregated by race and ethnicity. Whoops, sorry. I thought I clicked it through. Disaggregated by race and ethnicity as well as by our student, our student special populations. As a reminder to our community, Section 98B requires schools to create educational goals for the 2021 school year, 2122 school year. There are some parameters spelled out in the legislation that are really important for us to understand and discuss. First, that the data used in assessing the goals be based upon the required, partially based upon the required K-8 benchmark assessments. The NWEA serves that capacity for us. Second, that the goals are created should be tied to existing goals. We've met this expectation by aligning our goals to the district's 21 through 23 MYKIP District Improvement Plan. When reviewing our progress, we're required to disaggregate the data by multiple demographic and programmatic areas. And finally, we're required by law to publicly present these goals twice at Board of Education meetings and on the transparency section of the district website. Section 98B requires district goals to assess growth or achievement in reading and math. We're going to take a few moments to explore the goals that we're measuring this year. You will note that while there are similarities in structure due to the requirements of 98B, our goals are created in grade-level bands. This allows us to more efficiently utilize our current data sources without impacting instructional time by adding additional assessments just to meet this legislative requirement. In addition, having four narrow bands, which you'll see in a moment, will support a more focused disaggregated data analysis. This specific slide shows our middle and end-of-the-year reading and math goals for students in grades K-2. For this grade band, we will be analyzing student achievement and growth at both the middle and the end of the year utilizing NWEA as the main data source. For the third through fifth grade band, we will be analyzing student achievement and growth as measured by the NWEA at the middle of the year, and achievement as measured by student progress towards meeting academic standards at the end of the year. We made the choice to use these data points because the NWEA is only administered in the fall and winter in grades three through eight because the M-step is what our spring assessment is. And we're really sensitive to not overtesting during that springtime of year. For grades six through eight, we have similar goals as to our grade three-five band. Similarly, we will be analyzing student achievement and growth in the middle of the year as measured by NWEA, and academic achievement as measured by class grades at the end of the year. Again, we're using these data points to avoid losing valuable instructional time in the spring to additional testing. Finally, for our high school students, we'll be looking at student achievement as measured by course credit attainment at the ends of Semesters one and two. Because Semester one grades were not finalized until February 4th, our administrative teams have not had adequately, adequate time to fully analyze and disaggregate the data and put that in, and prepare that for the presentation for you this evening. We are working on that now and will update the board and the community as soon as that analysis is available. Before we look at the specific graphs depicting the disaggregated NWEA data, I want to share a few broad key findings. First, when looking at the fall academic achievement on the NWEA, we see that our Black and Hispanic students are more likely to start the academic year behind their peers in other demographic groups. The same was found for our English learners, students with IEPs, and students of economic disadvantage. We also found that many pre-existing achievement gaps and growth gaps, actually, pre-achievement, pre-existing achievement gaps grew wider over the past year. So I apologize for my stumbling over that. With respect to growth, when looking at student growth from the fall of one school year to the fall of the next, we see that students across most demographic groups demonstrated stronger growth pre-pandemic than they have over the past two years. While this is concerning, it's extremely important for us to remember that the NWEA is a norm reference test and that the data from the National Norm Group was collected before the pandemic. So the comparison group that we're comparing our students to, both with respect to achievement and growth, that original sample, that control sample, was, all that data was collected pre-pandemic. So we are, we are comparing our students to goals that were set pre-pandemic. It's just important for us to realize because it's a, we need to keep that in perspective as we review the current data. We're going to begin by looking at an analysis of our fall achievement by race and ethnic groups. In alignment with data visibility and confidentiality rules that are supported by MDE, we are only reporting on demographic groups that have 30 or more students in that focal group. So for this analysis, analysis tonight, we will not be disaggregating our Native American and Pacific Islander demographic groups to the small numbers of those students and in respect of confidentiality. So we'll start by looking at the trend in reading achievement for our students in grades K through two, and I'm going to take a moment to explain the information that this chart represents. So this combo chart represents the three-year achievement trend of the five largest racial and ethnic groups in the district. So moving left to right, we have our Asian student population, Black or African-American student population, Hispanic population, two or more, students of two or more races, and then finally, our white population. And for each one of those groups, you'll see that there are three school years represented. The actual three-year fall achievement trend for each group is represented by the green line above that specific group. The light blue line represents the three-year fall achievement trend of all of the students that are not in that focal demographic group. So looking in that first column, all the way to the left-hand side, you look at that first green line, this represents the three-year achievement trend for our K-2 Asian demographic group. Following their progress over three years, we see that they performed initially at the 54th percentile on average in the fall of the 1920 school year, then at the 64th percentile in the fall of the 2021 school year, and at the 68th percentile this past fall. So just thinking about that percentile ranking, what I want to bring to everybody's attention is what that means. And if we look at just this past fall where those students performed at the 68th percentile, what that means, that their average achievement was better than 67% of the rest of that norm group. So, so they're performing almost in the top 70th percentile of the entire nation from that norm sample. And speaking of that norm sample, see, the dark thick line at the 50th percentile, that represents the national average. So when we're looking at these groups, if you see a line or any bubble that is above that dark blue line, that represents where our student group, or that student group for that year, performed above the national average, thinking about that national average in non-pandemic years. So that's just something for us to think about there. So the orange bar at the, I mean, excuse me, the blue line underneath or above the green lines, that represents all of the students that are not in that demographic group. So that allows us to see the achievement, the average achievement for students in a particular group compared to all of the other students for that time period not in that, in that demographic group. And that difference in performance over time, what we can, that is represented by those orange bars at the bottom of the chart, right, where it says difference in achievement, which, in the terms that we use frequently, that's that achievement gap. Where if it's a negative number, that shows that our focal demographic group is demonstrating performance lower than the rest of the students that they would be compared to. And if it's a positive number, that, that demographic group is outperforming the remainder of the students in their cohort, well, in the, at that grade level. So in review, the graphs we'll be looking at answer three important questions. Over time, one, how are our students in our demographic groups performing in comparison to the national average of all students in that grade band? Two, over time, how are students in our demographic groups performing compared to other students that are not in their demographic groups? And three, where do we see performance gaps between the two groups and how do those groups, how do those gaps change over time? So when we move to the next academic band, we're looking at the reading achievement trend for students in grades three-five. And here we see that our students' fall achievement has been relatively stable over the past three school years, which is great, as Ms. Rail spoke about earlier. Again, as we continue to look at the data represented, I draw your attention to the relationship between the green lines and the blue lines, as well as the relationship between both of those lines and the dark thick blue national average. And the, the space between those blue lines and the green lines, again, will be represented by those orange bars in the back that will highlight the academic achievement gaps that exist over time. When we look at our reading achievement trend for students in grades six, eight, again, over time, we see a little bit of a, I'm sorry. Oops, sorry. So we're looking at reading achievement grade for our students in grades six through eight. We see a slight performance dip overall, but it's not as drastic as that, you know, five to 10 percentage point drop that Ms. Rail referenced when she was talking about what the NWEA research has shown. Moving on to math achievement trends for students in grades K-2, this is some interesting data as we see quite variations in student achievement percentile, where we see an increase in student achievement last year and then a drop to this fall. Math achievement trends for students in grades three-five show less variability than we saw with grades K-2, and overall positive trends for all demographic groups except our Black and African-American students. Looking at math achievement trends for students in grades six, eight, we see pretty consistent performance over time for all groups. This is interesting, again, based upon the trends that Ms. Rail referenced earlier. We really would have expected a fairly large negative trend in middle school math over the past two years. For this next set of graphs, we'll have the same student groups broken down by special population status. So this will include our English learners, students with an IEP, and students of economic disadvantage. As we look at the reading achievement of our K-2 students and identified special populations, again, I'm reminding you that the green line is our focal demographic group, the blue line is all the other groups, and the orange bars at the bottom represent the achievement gaps. One positive trend that you see on this graph that will be represented on all the other graphs for reading and math is the narrowing of achievement gap between English learners and our students who are not English learners over time. Looking at the reading achievement trends for students in grades three through five, again, we see that narrowing of the gap for our students who are English learners. Same data for students in grades six through eight. Transitioning to math achievement for that same population. Same data for students in grades six through eight. Transitioning to math achievement for that same population, again, starting with our kindergarten through second-grade students. One thing to note about the interesting shape of the graphs in this is that it does mirror the data that we saw in our racial and ethnic groups. Here we have math achievements for students in grades three through five, again, which looks similar to the racial and ethnic data for this band, again, noticing the narrowing of the gap for our English learners that I referenced earlier. Finally, looking at math achievement for the special population groups in grades six So, now we're going to spend a little bit of time looking at our demographic group growth trends, and we're going to use that same combination graph. So, we're going to start with reading growth trends for students in grades K through two, and I'm going to point out a few things in this graph. First, note that we're looking at fall-to-fall growth. So, when we say nineteen-twenty, that is growth for students from the fall of two thousand and nineteen to the fall of twenty-twenty. So, that's tests that occur over two school years, and then we have the fall of twenty-twenty compared to fall of twenty-twenty-one, and then the fall of twenty-twenty-one compared, wait, let me say it again, sorry, eighteen-nineteen, the nineteen-twenty school year is the fall of two thousand and eighteen compared to the fall of two thousand and nineteen. The twenty-twenty-one school year is the fall of two thousand and nineteen compared to the fall of twenty-twenty, and the twenty-one-twenty-two school year is the fall of twenty-twenty compared to the fall of twenty-twenty-one. So, we're comparing where student, how much students grew over the previous school year. So, the fact that there's no data in the nineteen-twenty school year actually isn't a mistake. There's no data here because in order to calculate a growth score, you need two scores. You need a pre-score and and a post-score, and we did not assess our kindergarteners in the fall of two thousand and eighteen on the NWEA. We actually didn't assess them until the winter of twenty-twenty, so it would be incomplete data for the nineteen-twenty, to look at that in the nineteen-twenty school year. The fall-to-fall growth percentile data is extremely valuable as it tells us how well our students grew relative to the average of, the average growth of NWEA's national sample. Again, we're remembering that that national sample talks about growth in non-pandemic years. So, as we look, where it's not going to be unexpected that our student growth historic, has declined throughout the pandemic because our students' instruction has been interrupted. One anchor point to look at as we visually explore the data is to see where our students are performing compared to that national average for growth. For example, if, what we want to see is even within time periods where there's there's been some impact due to the pandemic, is that, is our, are students still growing above average, above what they, what would be predicted? So, as we move to student growth in grades, in reading in grades three through five, we do see that data entering in from that first point, and we see that there's there's stable growth, relatively stable growth for that first two years, and then that last year, right, from the fall of twenty-twenty to the fall of twenty-one, we do see a decrease in student achievement, I mean, excuse, student growth, I'm sorry, we see a decrease in student growth over that last full school year. So, all of last year, from the fall of last year compared to the fall of this year. We look at grades six through eight, for the most part, we see a similar pattern. And this is our students' kindergarten, second grade in in math. With math, we're seeing that greater impact on student growth than we did in reading, which, again, holds with all of the national data that we've been reporting between the fall and now. Grades three through five. And growth in math for grades six through eight. Interesting, and and we're finding that in the national data too, in terms of the interesting piece where math seems to have its greatest impact in terms of impact on student growth in the beginning portions of the pandemic, where in reading, it was about even between between both. Looking at fall-to-fall growth trends by population, we're looking at our K-two special population groups. One of the things that you'll find with our special population groups across the graphs is that it seems as though the decline in growth is not as steep as the decline for students not in our special populations. You'll also see that across, across the special population groups, in most cases, a narrow, a narrowing of the growth gap across all three of these demographic groups. Looking at reading for grades three through five. And then reading in grades six through eight. Here we have math growth in grades K-two. Grades three through five. And grades six through eight. So, I know that's a lot of data, and I'm going to bring it all back around to to summarize. So, on a positive note, two years into the pandemic, overall, our student achievement is for the, for the most part, in line with our historical performance. However, what we also find is that that does also mean that our traditionally underperforming demographic groups continue to underperform their peers. And finally, while we saw some positive movement in narrowing the gaps in growth for some demographic groups, that was not the case for all, and in many cases, we actually saw performance gaps increase over time. In May, we'll be back in front of you to provide an update on our goals by reviewing our academic progress on multiple data points. It's my pleasure to turn the presentation over to Dr. Brady, who will share with you the work the Curriculum Instruction Department is engaged in to address the trends that we just identified.
Thank you. Good evening again. I do, I too, have a lot of notes for tonight. There's a lot of information that I'm going to be sharing, and so I just want to make sure that I have all my ducks in a row, so I appreciate your understanding that I have a lot of notes in front of me. Earlier in the presentation, Ms. Rail discussed, am I close enough? Can you hear, okay? She discussed the work that had done previously to eliminate the gap. So, next, the next section, the different directors that you see are going to be sharing the work that's been happening over the last two years and the next steps on on where we are in the journey. We want Equity to not be that one-day professional development. We want it to be the lens that we see all of our work through, so it's pervasive and it's all the time. So, what are we doing now that that looks a little different? So, the Curriculum and Instruction Team looks, looks through six different lenses at our work with Equity. So, you can see from the graphic that's there that we look at curriculum, we look at instruction that occurs, the professional development opportunities that we provide, staff members, the support that we provide, teachers and building administrators, the data that's used by building teachers, also the data that's used within curriculum and instruction, how we incorporate student voice into the work that we do. All of those pieces interact with one another. So, you you will see as I, as I move forward that you talked about that before, and it's coming back again. It does, because all of these things interact with each other, but I'm going to share the work that we're doing through those different lenses so that it kind of gives you a structure. I'm going to start with the curriculum focus, and there's really two main focal points, and you'll see the the bullets correspond to the color that that's on the chart there. There's equity work and course adjustments. Those are, those are the main areas inside of curriculum that we have worked on over the last two years. First, I'm going to start with how the deeply embedding curriculum, equity work into the curriculum. We are thankful, and the Curriculum and Instruction Team is thankful for partnering with Dr. Denise Lilly, who's here this evening. She's our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. She has helped us to really integrate our curriculum work with equity work so that it is not separate. When we started, one of the first things we wanted to do was to evaluate the effectiveness of our curriculum in an equity lens, and to see if if we had holes, if we had issues, and what was going on. So, we did a first start at that, that is, work that needs to continue. We did, we did a preliminary step, and and we did notice some pieces that that needed to be addressed right away. So, this work of embedding equity into curriculum supports the the closing of the achievement gap because it looks, there are very specific places where our curriculum is not meeting needs of our different subgroups. So, there's teaching practices, for example, that are woven into curriculum. There's resources that we need to make sure that we have that are going to support all of our different subgroups. So, looking at it through that lens helps us to see, are there holes that are that are there? So, we have some key findings from our initial conversations regarding equity work, and we found several areas that need to be addressed. So, one of them is to integrate culturally responsive instructional practices into the curriculum itself, so to name them. Here are very specific things that you can do with students in order to support a variety of learners in your classroom. That was not something that previously was specified inside of the curriculum, and that needed to occur. So, as I've shared with the board many times, we use Atlas as our curriculum warehouse, and it had instructional practices, but they were not specific to making sure we were working with all of our different subgroups. All of these practices support culturally responsive teaching, and there's a lot of research, especially out of Hanover, that I know we've partnered with as a district in regards to integrating those kinds of practices into the curriculum. So, our initial stage, the first step to this, was to get our framework inside of Atlas to look a little bit different. We we needed a section that was about instructional practices that that support equity work, and so we we started with that. It is based on Goldie Muhammad's work, who has partnered and done some pieces with the district. Almost all of the courses that have gone through the curriculum cycle, as you know, not all courses have gone yet, but those that have, we are working through making sure that that integration is there and the framework is 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 part of it. We have a little bit more work to do. That will be finished by June of the school year. In addition, this past summer, when we had different programs going on, the summer school program that was for EL students also integrated that work in curriculum. Work was done in partnership with Kimberly May in order to ensure that this, the summer school programming for EL students also, that work was embedded. So, in addition to the equity work, there were course adjustments that were made for curriculum. We wanted to make sure that any, any courses had materials that they needed to have, and so we started to look at some of those pieces. I'm not going to highlight every single thing that we did because I want to be respectful of everyone's time, but I would like to highlight a couple of things. So, inside of our ELA curriculum in particular, we we adjusted things in several places. One of the things that we noticed was not as robust phonics and phonemic awareness instruction that we might have needed at the lower grades in elementary. Those are very specific instructional practices which aid the learning of literacy, especially for students who might need additional supports. So, new materials were purchased for phonics awareness for for teachers to utilize with students this past year, and we always provide training opportunities for our teachers so that they know how to utilize those resources. Coaches also offer support. There are also changes in ELA in sixth through tenth grade. We're kind of in the process. Some of the grades, it's already been implemented, a couple of the grades, we're working on it, but we have included book club units into all of those grades. We want to do that because, to make sure there's high interest for students because they're reading things that they want to. It allows for voice and choice within the classroom, which we know is important. Students need to see themselves inside the classroom. They need to see books that are important to them. It also offers students scaffolded opportunities inside of book book clubs to practice decision-making, explore topics of their choice, see their own academic identity, and then connect learning to passions that they have and topics that are important to them. One final thing I'm going to address as far as the adjustment piece under curriculum is elementary math resource. We had started to, as you know, the board, I've been before the board quite a few times in regard to elementary math, we had started piloting a resource prior to the pandemic starting, and when the pandemic happened, we knew that we needed to make sure we had something that was robust for for teachers to be able to use. There were some issues with our previous resource. There was nothing that was online. There were not adjustments made for students who are EL and for students who might need additional supports. And so, it was that we determined that although we we knew we were in a pandemic, it was really important to make sure that all of those pieces were with our teachers. It's very difficult to to support students when the resources don't match the learners who are in front of you. And so, because of that, we determined it was essential to make sure we updated that with more culturally responsive materials. So, you might wonder why, in the middle of a pandemic, it's why. We we had a resource that was better in order to support all of our learners, and so we made sure that we wanted to do that. That's why it was implemented. One final thing that I want to highlight inside of the curriculum area is the creation of some different processes for determining course development as well as material selection. So, again, we want equity to be the lens through which we see things, not something that is separate, and so we need to put in some processes to make sure that those those things are happening, and it's, all of those things are are decided with an equity-based approach. We want to make sure students have access to materials that promote cultural responsiveness. So, all of the things, changes that I just talked about within curriculum, which is probably the largest area, I'm the Director of Curriculum, Curriculum and Professional Development, so it's it's where we spend a good amount of our time inside of curriculum, the Curriculum Instruction Team. So, all of those changes, what we're hoping to see is the implementation of more culturally responsive practices inside of the classroom, giving them, teachers, the materials, students, the materials that they need to be able to work with with students. So, the next section is instruction, and I'm going to talk about some ideas inside of there. Our priority in this section is to work with research-based practices, and which have been shown through many research studies, that that helps to close the achievement gap. There are several we focused on, again, I'm going to highlight just a couple so that you can understand kind of where 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 our our lens is. The first is workshop format, format for both literacy and math at the elementary level. This is something that began to be implemented prior to twenty-twenty, but it is something that we've been focused on to make sure that teachers have the resources and the understanding what they need to be able to do that. Another area for K-12, all all grade levels, is working in small groups. We know that whole group instruction does not work for all for all students, and that there needs to be specific small group-directed instruction in order to support the needs of of different of different students. And then, we also are focused on an inquiry-based learning process, so our science, for example, we want, we want students to be scientists, not do science, so we want to approach it in an inquiry-based way. Professional development courses were created within these themes for this year. I'm going to talk about PD in a minute, but know that those are focus areas for curriculum instruction, and therefore, we did have professional development that matched inside of that Within the small group instruction that I had talked about, we're trying to also support teachers in being able to do that by additional resources, that that's important that they have, what they need. So, an example of that is additional resources for K-five guided reading. It's one of the main ways that you can differentiate instruction for for young learners, for all learners, is to work with them separately. And so, for K-five reading, we have purchased quite a, quite a bit of materials, both online and actual books in their hands, in order for them to be able to meet, meet the needs. We also, one last thing, we continue to support teachers in integrating differentiated instruction into their classrooms. So, as we're thinking about those materials, I've talked about that quite a bit, we have to be mindful to select resources that are going to offer support for all different levels of students. We want all students to access, access the the curriculum and the content. So, differentiated instruction is about looking at students' current readiness level and what they need to be able to go in, and so I talk a lot, my my team hears me, hears me say a lot, we need to have low floor and a We need to have low floor and a high ceiling, which means that the door into what we're talking about is open for everybody. Everybody can come in. So whether you need a little extra support, it's okay. Whether you're above what we're currently doing, that's okay. You're going to enter into the conversation and we're going to meet your needs. Differentiation is about making sure that low floor, high ceiling is happening for students in all content areas. One example is, or some examples, our recent social studies and math resource purchases. We were looking at the lens of, does it have differentiation inside of it? Does it have materials for students who are at all different learning levels? Instead of just looking at, does it have the core content of what we need to teach right now today? Do we have, does it have embedded things that can support all different learners? We want to look at, we ask ourselves questions like, are there ways to allow for remediation and extension? Does the resource support all learners? Let's see. I'm going to jump to the one, one last thing. We did purchase another resource that I am excited about. This is new this year. It's called Newzella. It is an online research of texts for sixth through 12th grade students. And what's super helpful, I guess, with this resource is teachers can select an article that meets the needs of whatever topic that they're going into. So a social studies teacher is teaching a lesson, goes in and finds an article. The teacher can then take that article and adjust it to meet the needs of different learning, reading levels in the classroom. So the same article can be used with all students, but it's at different reading levels based on what the students need. This is new this year, and so we've done, again, we've done professional development opportunities for that new resource. The next section is focused professional development. Over the last two school years, we have done a lot of different professional development strategies in order to support our teachers. We partner with lots of different departments inside of teaching and learning, the technology department, the EL department, Dr. Lilly as well. We all come together and we've built what I think is a very comprehensive framework for both live and asynchronous professional learning courses. We have at this point for asynchronous professional development about 100, between 110, 120 courses that have been created for asynchronous learning. The courses are not randomly determined. We have been very conscientious about what to put before teachers. If we want teachers to be able to be culturally responsive in classrooms and support the diverse needs of their students, we need to provide them professional learning to help them do so. We've had kind of two categories of inside of equity work for our professional development, really big picture topics and then also very content-specific things for teachers. So examples of big picture course would be implicit bias training that Dr. Lilly and I worked on together earlier this year. That was overarching and all teachers participated in that. Another example would be developing a culture of thinking for all and integrating social emotional learning into a culturally responsive classroom. So those are larger, any teacher could take that, right? Our social workers could take that. It's good for everybody. Some examples of content-specific would be equity in science. So specific for science teachers. So how do we apply equity concepts into a science classroom? Another example is planning and implementing math workshop, going back to that workshop concept I talked about before. And then try not to forget our special teachers, our VAPA teachers, for example. Music from diverse composers is something that we did for elementary music teachers so that they had an opportunity to integrate diverse composers into their curriculum. We're dedicated to continuing to do that. Obviously, we will continue to work on equity-based professional learning. In addition to formal PD days, another way that we support teachers with learning is through newsletters that the curriculum instruction team creates. There's different ones that go out. It depends on what the teachers teach. Those communications occur on a monthly basis. And inside of them, we share reminders, of course, of things coming up. But we also share resources, ideas for instructional practices. Our elementary newsletter has culturally relevant responsive teaching practices inside of it that they can try, videos perhaps that they can watch. There's a lot of pieces that go into that. For our support category, I'm going to focus on how we've been supporting the teachers and buildings over the last two years. As Ms. Rail had talked about, initially there were two coaches and we've had an opportunity to expand, adding over the last three years, three new coaches. We have three full-time, I'm sorry, three full-time coaches to a total of seven. We added a specific high school coach, a specific middle school coach. We've added four. Four. We've added four. An elementary, another elementary specific coach, as well as a building-based early literacy coach. There's been four new coaches added. That expansion has allowed us to better support teachers because there's more coaches to be able to support. All those practices I talked about before with instruction, we need to be able to support teachers in learning how to do that. It also allows the curriculum coordinators and the coaches to provide more partnership opportunities with buildings. It's something that's been a focus this year. Either whole departments they're working with, whole buildings at the elementary level, for example. There are times that every single day, certain buildings have a coach the entire day, offering support. Coaches now have a focus. We kind of changed a little bit what their focus was with the more coaches. We can be more pinpointed in what they're going to do. The addition of the high school coach allowed the middle schools to have two specific coaches for them. They each go to three buildings. One also goes to Starkweather. Our high school coach focuses over at PSEP. And then our three, our three specific elementary coaches, one is literacy, and the other two focus on content specifics so that it allows them to be experts inside of those areas and also put very specific guided support for teachers. Another area that we have focused on is making sure that the coaches and curriculum coordinators have a large toolkit to be able to go to support teachers. If we're going to help guide inside of this work and help to close the gaps, they need to be able to pull a lot of tools out and have a lot of understanding inside of that area. So with partnership with Dr. Lilly, the coaches and I, and our EL coach participating in training was the Reda Hammond, Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain. And this training focused on building classroom culture. It starts there, building culture with students in your classroom. And then also the different kinds of instructional practices that can happen to support all learners inside of a classroom. So that's just one thing, but that's a highlight. It has shifted the expectation of how coaches work with teachers. We've shifted that as well. The team, the CNI team, does lots of different kinds of training. In order to best support teachers and administrators, we engage in book studies. We do job embedded professional learning cohorts. We partner with districts outside of Plymouth Canton so that we can garner their knowledge. We have some partnerships outside that we are also working on. Our next area, I promise there's only two more. Our next area is data. And within the curriculum process, like I said, we focus on helping and supporting the teachers. One of those ways is the implementation, the use of common assessments. It is very important to be able to determine how to best support students. We're talking about closing the gap. We need to know where the gap is, what's happening with it, and we need to look at data to do that. And I'm not talking just NWEA data. I'm talking about internal assessments, informal assessments so that we can understand on a more day-to-day basis the kind of things that we need to do to support. So data analysis is a key factor for teachers to be able to really target what needs to occur in order to close, in order to close that gap. So teachers can use the data and PLCs. We talked about the PLC before. And the coaches support PLC work at all levels. They are often at the PLCs at middle school and high school, and then they also offer support at the elementary. So data needs to be looked at regularly. Some of the things that we do to help teachers utilize that data is team members, CNI team members will help teachers with BAS data, the Benchmark Assessment Data. I have team members who have, they sit and they pour through the data. They look at it. How do we then take this data to create lesson plans off of it to meet the needs of students? That's part of the work that not just the coaches, the curriculum coordinators also do that work. In addition to the support at the building level, the CNI team does look at the data as well. We do that so we can make curricular changes. I kind of talked about those shifts earlier, so I'm not going to go back through those. But we use data to make those decisions. They're not random. We do look at data for that. My final area to discuss tonight is student voice. We want to give students opportunities to be heard. We've talked about that when we brought ELA materials through you. We talked a lot about choice and giving opportunities for that for students. Within the previous curriculum process, we didn't have student voice as strongly as we needed to. It wasn't integrated in, and so therefore, over the last year, we have reworked what that curriculum process looks like. I don't mean the chart that I bring before you, but the actual internal processes that we're using to support students. So I'm going to share a couple of ways that we have made some shifts so that you can see what we've done. We've started adding students into the review of curriculum resources. So social studies that we just brought before you and the math that we've brought before you. Those, we get feedback from students on, the students who are piloting those resources about them so that we can have voice inside of that. We ask about their preferences for materials, what they like, what they don't like, why. Ask them to compare it to previous so that we can get ideas about that. Another way is with course creation input. There are new courses that get created at the secondary level. And so we will be asking students their ideas about what they're looking for and what they want. And then we've also added some student-based programs that the CNI team, curriculum instruction team, has helped to initiate. And that includes the Religious Diversity Journeys Program as well as Student Youth Dialogues. So that, in a nutshell, is what we've been working on for the two years. But we do have next steps. We, of course, are looking at additional pieces that we need to do. We need to continue to integrate equity components. So although the pieces that have already gone through the curriculum cycle, the curriculum instruction team is working on that because we're not really doing full curriculum right now due to sub shortages and those kinds of things. We want teachers involved in that process. So as we bring teachers back in for curriculum, they need to work with that. As we review curriculum again, we need teachers to give us ideas. We have a start to it, but this is not finite. And we need to, the more we can put in to give teachers ideas, the better off we will be. So we'll continue that work. We're going to do further equity auditing. That is going to start soon. Again, I appreciate Dr. Lilly. She's helping us with that. We did a first blush at this, but we need to go more deeply into it to really audit what we have, to make sure that we're doing everything we can. We need to reengage with the curriculum cycle. That is where power comes from. It's how we bring teachers' voice into it. It's how we make sure that what we have is meeting the needs of all students. So we have some things, as you know, that have kind of been on hiatus a little bit. We need to come back to that process. Hopefully, next fall, we'll be able to do that. And then we also want to expand our partnerships. I talked a lot about the curriculum instruction team working with buildings and working with the different PLCs. But we want to expand those partnerships as much as possible. The team has a lot, like I said, of tools in their toolkit that they can help and support buildings with. And we want to partner with teachers to be able to help support their growth as they continue on in this process. So that's the work that the curriculum instruction team has done. You can see there's many pieces that have been implemented over the last two years. We will continue to support colleagues in teaching and learning as well as the buildings. And I'm going to turn it over to Dana Jones, who's going to talk about early childhood.
Thank you, Dr. Brady. Good evening, everyone. First, I thought I would just share a little bit for the viewers and for everyone may not know about all of the programs that we have and what offerings we have for young children in our district. So we have the Early On and IPSEP specialized programming in the district. And then we also have GSRP classrooms, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a moment. And then we have quite a few tuition-based programs as well. And that equals out to 24 classes, many therapy groups, play groups, things like that. And we are across seven schools. Allen is all early childhood programming, but we are also at six additional schools throughout the district. So we're going to, I'm going to talk first about what we have been doing the last few years. And one of the biggest areas that has been a focus for us is the GSRP expansion. GSRP stands for Great Start Readiness Program. And it is a state-funded program and recently also a federally funded program. And so we were able to go from 48 seats in three classrooms to 80 seats in five classrooms. So I'm able to serve quite a few more students. And these are students who typically, the families would qualify based on various factors. Many of them directly correlate with some of the groups and the gaps areas that we're trying to close, to reduce. So we really feel like this is a great, great way to support that work. We also are focusing on inclusive practices. And so early support, early identification, early inclusion opportunities. We certainly have students throughout our program who may receive specialized support services. But some really natural pairings that we have in our program are the Early On program and the Stay and Play program. Those are for two-year-olds, so that is a really nice partnership. As well as the GSRP program provides some great opportunities to support students, particularly with IEPs. What we're looking to expand are opportunities for three-year-olds. So that is a growth area for us as that becomes a possibility. And then looking at policy and procedure, procedure and structural improvements, just trying to remove those barriers. When we first had to be at home as a result of the pandemic, we realized that we did not really have a great platform to share out content with our preschool families. And Canvas was not going to be the right vehicle for our youngest learners. So we, as a team, started to develop the use of CSOW. And so that can be used for communication. It can also be used to share out content. And so that has been a really nice piece to provide an equal access platform for all of our families. We also are always looking to connect with the professional development that's happening in the district. Specifically, we spoke of the DEI professional development, but all types, really. We have, whenever possible, we participate in what is being offered. So we have that alignment with the district. And sometimes we have licensing requirements where we have to develop some pieces on our own. But we try to mirror what's happening in the district whenever we can. And then another piece would be the implementation of social emotional learning lessons. I like to think that in early childhood, we've sort of always had the luxury of focusing on social emotional. That's been a piece that's been embedded. Maybe we thought about it more previously as teaching kids how to share and take turns and have healthy self-esteem. And I think now we're really digging deeper into that, providing some specific resources for our teachers and really looking at things like, you know, while we are certainly not experts in trauma-informed, we are adding that lens and that layer to our work when we're working with students. And looking for the opportunities to embed that in our professional development and in our daily lessons. And a nice piece that we have seen sort of as a connection with that is the ability of some of our staff being able to talk about that component in our professional learning communities and seeing some of our staff members start to embed that in their personal goals for their evaluation process. So that's been really rewarding to see. Moving to the next slide. As Dr. Brady mentioned, we work with all of the different partners in the teaching and learning team. And in the EL department, we have the opportunity to connect for coaching support. Our students don't yet qualify as, under the EL support, but our teachers can benefit from some of the coaching. And an area that we have really expanded on is our use of language lines so that we can help the families register, help with conferencing and connecting. So that has been a piece as well. We are also working on, all of our programs are accredited through Great Start to Quality. That's the Michigan Accreditation System. And so some pieces of that, that helps us as a program to be aligned and be looking at the same standards. And then there is quite a bit of coaching support, consultant support through that. An area that we've been focusing on this year, in order to go through that accreditation process to receive the higher-level scores, you do have to participate in site visits. And so the previous tool that was used for site visits really focused on the environment. And so, you know, setting up a positive and nurturing environment. The new one that's going to be starting in October focuses on the adult-child interactions. So we're really excited about that and think that that's a great opportunity. So we've taken this year, we've had some of our staff members go to become trained themselves. And then we've been sharing in some of our professional development about this new tool and then start, had the opportunity to. start had the opportunity to have some coaching within our classrooms for that, some peer coaching. So that has been a really positive piece as well. And then along with the district focusing on early literacy, that's been a professional development focus for us. And as as recently as today, just started planning out some the next two years of that professional development for our team members. So we're really excited about that. You know, one of the, one of the things we hear from families all the time is that they appreciate and sometimes choose us as a preschool option because we're aligned with the district. And so we just want to continue to strengthen that piece as we as we proceed. And then when we look at our next steps, we want to continue to look for opportunities to expand. I think often when I am tuning into the news, I'm hearing about increased opportunities for preschool funding. And so as those opportunities come along, we want to be ready to proceed and to move forward with those. So we're watching for those opportunities and we're also watching as the district does some bond work and there might be some classrooms for us to move into into some other parts of the district. And one of those areas that we we know that there will probably be some additional four-year-old GSRP opportunities, but I think on the horizon, we'll probably see a three-year-old GSRP opportunity as well. So we we want to be ready to take advantage of that. And so it's another piece, which I think you'll hear from some of my colleagues as well, talking about the administrative walkthroughs using the culturally responsive practices walkthrough tool. And then we will be using the class observation tool as well that I just mentioned. And then we want to continue with our Childfind efforts. We do a lot in terms of recruitment. And then because then, you know, most often the students that come to us, it's their first time to be in in a school setting. Sometimes we're the first ones to say, ooh, I think we might need a little support here or some evaluation or or this sort of connection. And so we take that very seriously and work really hard at that piece as well as helping our students have a successful transition into the K-12 setting. So work closely with Maureen Malloy to work on the transition into kindergarten or Young Five's kindergarten, whichever the families might choose. And then, as I mentioned, we'll be continuing with our early literacy focus. And I will turn it over to Maureen now.
Oh, I can do it. Yeah, sure. Good evening, everyone. At the elementary level, we continue to work in collaboration with the Curriculum and Instruction Department with the focus professional learning for our teachers of our youngest students. Our focus, as Dana mentioned, was is has really been around literacy and numeracy and and focused in to support our kindergarten teachers and our Young Five kindergarten teachers around foundational practices. You also heard this evening around the importance of instructional coaching and we have increased the number of literacy coaches at the elementary level with that targeted support primarily at K-3. We continue to work, to do our work connected with the Read by Grade Three Law, which affords us the opportunity to really dig in to recognize students who are performing below grade level and working on those individualized reading plans. And we look at that across all buildings and have deep conversations around what are the best strategies to meet those, the needs of those students. We also talk about how are we meeting the connection, the need to connect with families and the needs of our students. And as Dana mentioned, we too at Elementary have increased our use of the language line. And we continue to move forward with our our use of PSYOP strategies, which I know you've heard about at the board level many times before. Our ELD teachers this year are focusing on writing instruction and that decision was made at the elementary level based on the data that was reviewed. Thank you. As with other levels, you're you'll hear that we are connecting closely with the Human Resources Department and we're paying attention to our hiring processes. And we work collaboratively with the Human Resource Department to include a focus on attracting diverse candidate pool, recognizing and addressing bias in the hiring process and providing and making sure that we have access for all our families. So we're really paying attention to who who do we have to support students and how can we best have a representative teaching force? One focus this year was to expand the opportunity for Young Five kindergarten classrooms in all of the buildings with the intentionality around parent choice and access. For example, in the past, students had to meet a requirement for birthdate in order to access Young Five kindergarten and families would have to drive their students to the Young Five kindergarten classroom. This year, we were afforded the opportunity to expand that and offer Young Five kindergarten options in all buildings. And we we worked with families to determine what did the family deem appropriate for their child, knowing that and believing that families know their children best. We continue this year with a focus daily intentional instruction around social emotional learning standards. And we continue to focus on supporting the whole child as we have 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 added some additional support roles, student success specialists, ELD teachers, student support coordinators, behavior specialists, and school counselors so that we can really work individually and specifically and intentionally to support our students. And we thank the Board of Education for supporting those roles. Next steps for elementary. You know, as we look forward to building on the work that we've already begun with instructional rounding, this is where administrators and teachers observe together and share feedback to improve teaching and learning specific to identified strategies in the classroom. And so what you heard from the Curriculum and Instruction Department, Dr. Brady talked about those intentional, high-yield, specific instructional strategies. Instructional rounding, as we move forward, will give us that opportunity to go into classrooms to support teachers and to support one another in our own learning around the implementation of those strategies. We continue our commitment to intentional targeted work with our kindergarten teachers related to the foundations of inquiry, literacy, and numeracy and other strong and very important instructional practices around the whole child. So really that intentionality around understanding how young children learn and and building from that. Our elementary administrators will continue to use the cultural responsive walkthrough tool, as Dana mentioned earlier, as a basis for those deep conversations with teachers around instructional practices, around meeting the needs of every student, around access, and around high expectations for students. At the elementary, the elementary team will continue to explore options and scheduling that lend to specific grouping and layered supports and intentionality and connecting to real-life experiences. Some of you may be familiar with the win, the what I need segment of a day where where you will, we could look at grouping students together and and having some flexible grouping around intentional and specific targeted needs of students. And as we look forward to the additional data profiles that will come to us and be available through Panorama, it will lend us the opportunity to identify those targeted needs and offer those related supports even more so than we already are. Now I'll turn it back over to Anthony to share information about middle school.
Thank you, Maureen. At the middle school level, a big focus for us this year has been providing tiered supports to facilitate students developing their social emotional competencies. On a tier one level, we are new to implement the Positivity Project, which buildings are doing two to three days a week in their advisory class. Advisory also depending upon the building out there, maybe homeroom or primetime. Different buildings have a different name for it. And during these periods, students and teachers discuss and reflect upon positive character traits and focus on relationship building. In addition, we expanded student access to Skills for Success, which is a tier two intervention by ensuring that there's a class section at each grade level in each one of our schools. Academically, our buildings are finding time during the school day to provide individual academic support to students. So in addition to having access to tutoring support during lunch and in advisory on non- Positivity Project days, buildings are implementing out-of-the-box interventions such as assigning students to academic support advisories. So for example, one building that may have identified that, you know, math is a significant issue at the time, have created specific grade-level math advisories so students can get targeted intervention with the teachers that they have during the day. Other pieces that we see is increased use of the frequency of previous interventions such as check-in, checkout, where students are in the morning when they come into school, finding a trusted adult, and they go through a process where that adult is checking in with that student, making sure that that student has everything they need academically and emotionally in order to fully participate in the education, their education for that day. To assist with meeting the demands of increased student need, we will be, are fortunate enough to soon be hiring one dean of student support at each one of our middle schools. We consider this position to be a tier two support for students who are struggling academically, socially, and behaviorally. So unlike a traditional dean who we may think of back into our days in school as being responsible for discipline, that's not this position at all. This individual is a proactive resource for students, someone who will assist students with challenges such as resolving interpersonal conflict, building positive relationships with their peers or perhaps other teachers, as well as academic organization. So so this individual is really a student support. Ultimately, we expect our deans of student support to have a heart for all students and to be an overall champion for supporting a positive climate for all students and staff within the school. We know that, speaking of school culture and climate, we know that our students begin to find their voice and really, really explore who they are and try on different hats throughout middle school. And the past two years have presented especially challenging time for these young adolescents. And we really want to take an opportunity to harness the power of their voice through increasing purposeful engagement. One way that we are doing this is by bringing student voice into the hiring of our certified staff. So in addition to what we've usually done, which is having teaching candidates teach a lesson in front of students, we've begun to have opportunities, take opportunities to interview students and get their perspectives on the qualities and characteristics that they would like to see in the adult leaders in their building. So we did this for the East Middle School principal interviews where I called individual students and interviewed them with respect to the qualities that they wanted to see in their principal. And then for these dean positions, each building did student, ran student focus groups so that they can collect information from students in terms of what do I need from the adult who's going to serve in this role and support the students in the building. In additional efforts to elevate student voice and choice, middle school staff have engaged in professional learning to better understand what it looks like in the classroom. And Dr. Brady spoke to that a little bit. And this is really so important for our demographic groups because when we offer students the choice of the direction of their learning, they're more likely to explore topics that they identify with, whether that's a racial, ethnic, or a cultural level, as well as opportunities to learn about others who are different from themselves. While each building has many examples, some of the common middle school programs are the Religious Diversity Journeys Program that Dr. Brady mentioned, the Black History 101 Mobile Museum, and the Project Lit Book Club that many of our students participate in. Speaking of engagement, our buildings are frequent users of language line as well as interpretive services to support the involvement of families where English is not their primary Our PSYOP-trained teachers continue to be supported through targeted coaching and we've increased co-teaching in the core content classes. The great thing about co-teaching and the use of PSYOP strategies is that not only does it support English learners and students with IEPs, but all students in those classes benefit as well. Finally, the middle school team is engaging in work to ensure that all students are well-served. For example, we've elicited the support of Dr. Lilly as we work to name and remove biases from the hiring of staff as we strive to develop teaching and administrative staffs that better reflect the demographics of our student body. We're also engaged in work to review our structures and practices related to instruction grading and discipline so that we can better identify and remediate areas that disproportionately affect some of our marginalized student groups. As we move forward, we're currently evaluating and adjusting our new initiatives. Our data is telling us that we have many students that have needs in math that are not being met, and we've started the process as an administrative team to more critically examine how we serve those students. Similarly, we're excited to review and deconstruct our SEL survey data to see how we can better support students, learning the skills to develop and maintain strong academic skills and meaningful interpersonal relationships. In addition, we're looking to expand our student voice and choice through targeted elective courses and reviewing the club offerings that we have in each of our buildings to ensure that all students have a place where they know they belong. Finally, like our elementary colleagues, we'll continue to expand and work amplifying cultural responsive instructional practice in all of our instructional spaces. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Hurd to share information about the high school. Would you like me to navigate for you, Mr. Hurd?
Sure, that'd be great. So, good evening. As we move towards the high school level and talking about some of the strategies that we're using to close the gap and especially kind of pay more attention to our marginalized students. One of the first things that we want to talk about is the additional council that each building at the park. This gives the opportunity for counselors to do some unique things as far as groups, as far as pushing into classrooms, and also gives them a reduced class load, giving more individual attention to students as they move through, especially those students that need that attention when we started looking at the achievement gap. Secondly, the ESA period, the Extension Support and Advisory period that's been implemented this year, gives the opportunity for dedicated time to social emotional learning and opportunity for students to receive extra support during the school day. And then in this particular period, as we kind of refine it and kind of move forward with it, you can start to regroup and target specific student groups on certain days. We have two days right now of the week. Tuesdays is mostly the social emotional learning aspects. And then Thursday is the academic support pieces where you can start to regroup and try to target certain groups of students during those times. Then as we look at policy, procedure, instructional improvements to remove barriers to student success, some of the work that's been happening over the last two years with the help of Dr. Lilly and the Communications Department, became the creation of the Hate Has No Home Here posters. And it has like a unique QR code for students to report incidents of hate or bias. So it may be a situation where students are not necessarily comfortable coming forward with that, but they can still have an avenue for their voice to be heard and situations to be acknowledged and rectified as they move through our high school system. Then also through the work of Kimberly May and the EL Department, you know, serving our English learners, learners, we're able to shift from shelter classes to co-taught, a co-taught model which serves students that are known as our English learners. Looking at student engagement as we continue to work in this area, you know, some of the, some opportunities are starting to come to fruition. Right now, we're in the development of a mentoring program to actually engage those students that really, really need like that mentoring piece, as well as planning an after-school tutoring program to kind of serve our students and group and regroup students to kind of meet their academic needs or give them some extra support they would need. And then looking at creating clubs that are targeted towards student groups where students have a space where they feel a sense of belonging and feel a sense of safety. One example is a group that began during this particular two-year period, the Sister to Sister Group, where students have the opportunity to have that safe space and to be able to gauge and dialogue with one another. And as we move next to our next steps, one of the things that's happened in the past is that we had some identified counselors to assist our English learner students in their course selection, re-engaging in that process as we've had some some shifts in some of our staffing with our counselors, but re-identifying some counselors to assist our English learners in this course selection as they go through that particular process. And then developing and looking for opportunities to engage our families and students, especially those especially those to, that are looking to go to the, to college and maybe situations where they're first time, first time or the first ones in their family to engage in that process, but looking at activities to kind of build up on that. As well, taking some time this spring to evaluate the Extension Support Advisory or ESA period and kind of refine that and make sure that we're building the things that students need and kind of smoothing out some of the bumps that we've had in, bro, this school year as we implemented. And then enhancing like student agency, like, you know, a few years ago, we had, we began this journey and we had taken a group of students with us to partake in conferences and things of that nature and really get their input and developing like the theme of the school year and kind of building on, continuing to build on that, that process we started a few years ago. And then lastly, looking at creating, building data teams for ongoing like monitoring of student groups. So it's a situation where you can kind of get in it, identify situations that are happening and then have an immediate action planning and implementation to kind of avert situations. So for instance, if we notice, you know, in week one, we noticed that students are trending in one particular way, we can get in and look at the data, start an action plan, and then implement the action plan. So then we don't have that issue as you get to weeks seven, eight, nine, 10, or if, end of semester, things of that nature. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Beth Rell.
So, thank you for hanging in with us. There's one last quick additional next steps I want to talk about, and then we'll open it up for questions and comments from the board. So during our next Board of Education meeting, partners from our partnership with Hanover Research Firm will be here to share with our community the results of our Hanover Equity and Inclusion Diagnostic Survey in addition to the work from our Panover, our Panorama SEL competency survey, what our students are telling us about their experiences in the classroom in totality. So, next steps for us, an efficacy and mindset survey for our staff to determine, as we look at what our students are telling us, what do teachers feel the experience is in the classrooms and what supports do they need. Collective teacher efficacy is the collective belief that educators and their ability to positively affect our students. John Hattie's Visible Learning work and research has presented collective teacher efficacy as the number one influence related to student achievement, ranking first out of 252 studied influences. So as we look together, what is our students' experience in the classroom? And how are we supporting our, our teachers to support those experiences? Additionally, doing building level work around the exploration of themes and root cause analysis. We've been doing this work as a teaching and learning team. As this work trickles down into the building and Hanover supports us in this work, looking at what do we do in each specific building? Buildings look different than each other. What is working well that we need to collectively lift to the greater whole? And what areas do we need to look at shifting instructional practices, shifting interventions, all of those types of things? Full implementation of our Panorama Student Success Platform, we've talked about that previously. Implementation of our Data and Assessment Coordinator position. This is a new position. Thank you to the Board of Education for supporting the implementation of this position. This allows us to better focus on not just taking all the time to crunch data, but to help buildings actionably work with data. So bringing the data in an actionable way, having collaborative conversations with the teams at the school level. Additionally, the creation and support of accountability measures to help with this. An example you've heard tonight is the cultural responsive walkthrough tool. How do we know, how do we share with our instructional staff, what does this look like in a classroom? What will we see? What do we collectively do together? And as we're working with our administrators, how do we know where areas to support to ensure that our, all of our students' needs are being met in the classroom? Increased family engagement. We are proposing the addition of an Office of Student and Family Engagement. The purpose of that office will be to provide wraparound support for our families. That would include mental health services, a family academy where we help support our families in doing this work together. As we often say, it takes a village, and that village includes all of us together. And, you know, specific programs such as race-based trauma workshops. Workshops to help support instructional academic needs. How to help support your young person at home. Education has shifted a lot over the past few years and how we help provide access to all of our families to support in this area because we are collectively in this work together. That office would include members, cadre of people known as family liaisons or family ambassadors. And those folks would act as ambassadors and advocates for our family to help us get a collective voice from our families about what their experiences are and how we better support them, as well as for us to help support families in engaging with our students and helping support their academic needs. And finally, alignment of all of our work to every aspect of the Diamant Plan. We've talked about the 10 strategic objectives from teaching and learning, and those things are integral and are the woven threads throughout all of our work. So with that, we're going to pause for input and any questions you might have.
Ms. Christensen?
I'm up. This was such an information-rich presentation. I'm still processing quite a bit of it, but I just want to say like, wow, to all the work that is being done and that, that, you know, applaud you for, for, you know, highlighting the work that still needs to be done too. I mean, many of the questions I was jotting down as each of you were talking, and then you would answer it. So it was like, okay, I got that, I got that. Much of my questions really related to this, the student voice piece. For example, when you were talking about, you know, developing new curriculum and then piloting, piloting that new curriculum and bringing in student voice, one of my wonderings was, okay, are, who, what students are part of that piloting process? Or is it very intentional about, you know, whom we're, we're asking to pilot? Is it just our high achieving students or is it a mix?
No, it's a mix. So it's usually done at, at teacher, teachers volunteer to pilot, right? So, any of the curriculum coordinators, when, when they're piloting materials, we, we want teachers who want to participate in that because they have, it's extra work and they need to, and they work with us and meet with us to tell, give us feedback. So it's any students who are inside of those classrooms, they, they, they can provide us feedback. So no, it's not targeted only for, for a certain student demographic.
Great. And I guess I just have a, a general question for the entire group. You know, as a board, we're sitting here, we're listening to all of this great work that you're doing. We're seeing the results of our NWEA disaggregated data. Obviously, there are some hurdles. We see the gaps are widening. What can we do as a board to support you and your efforts? You know, you mentioned, for example, that, I have to look at my scribbles. You know, subs shortage is affecting the curriculum work and the coaching time. So, you know, I see that as like maybe as an obstacle that, you know, in some way the board can try to support. But I would love to, to understand that from, from our lens.
So, one thing I would say is, it's not necessarily, so there's two things. One, a lot of things, a lot of things, not just two things. There's a lot of things. When we look at the sub shortage and stuff, there isn't the ability to throw more people at the, a solution, right? Because there are no more people. We, we are actively recruiting, we're doing all of these things. It is not an ideal situation where we have to shift our additional supports for students into classrooms to provide basic classroom support to keep our classrooms running. That is our reality currently in the pandemic. So, one, if you could magically make the pandemic go away, this would be perfect, but you can't do that. So things that you can do in support for this is thinking through the lens of, as we look at the instructional practices we do, change is hard sometimes for folks. And as we change and shift in practices, we do all of the things that we can do to, we, we will continuously support people in this journey. And helping us by providing the supports when we come to you and say, here are the things that we need. The answer isn't more people. The, and one of our answers is, we've been doing a lot of work to collect data about what's working and what's not. Some of that work will wreck, will, will result in shifting some of the things we've historically done. We have pervasive gaps in our district. They have, they have, they start early and they stay over time. So, as we look at our work, a lot of our work and engagement we have is around what do we currently do and is it working or not? So if it's not working, what do we do to selectively abandon that and retrain folks to do things differently? And so as we continue that work, the other piece is, as we look at our data, a lot of it, as I said, we have gaps early, so we're going to have a lot of focus on early intervention programs. Dana talked about the GSRP program. The expansion of GSRP cannot be underestimated in the trajectory that it helps us do over time with our students. So we'll come at times and we'll ask for specific things throughout the bond process. We're looking at dedicated preschool classrooms. As we look at all of the programming we did, thank you for lifting before about ensuring that we have flexible furniture that looks at the needs of the future. So we need, we continuously engage in this work. We continuously support all of our instructional staff in the buildings as we engage in this work. And it is a lot of work, right? The other thing to understand is, I would love to have a magic wand or a silver bullet and say it's done today. When we implement new procedures, processes, strategies, such as a new curriculum, all those things, it takes three to five years to really fully implement and see the results of that. That does not mean that in the interim that students aren't being served well. What it means is that we are intentionally embedding and supporting teachers side by side with job embedded coaching, digging into those classrooms, helping teachers make use of the data. When you look at the gaps in our district, they're not new. They've been here for a while. We have, in some ways, done some of the same things over the course of years, and we need to shift away from doing that. So support, resources when we come to, come to the table and talk about them, and engaging in conversation with us. And I will also say, holding us accountable for the work. This is our work. This is our life's work. This is the most critical work we do as a team, as a district, as a community. And so helping engage with those support pieces, but always, always ensuring that the work is being done. So I'll let anybody else on the team speak as well if anyone has anything to add.
Thank you. Mr. Kehoe?
So echoing Ms. Christensen's comments and, and specifically what you just mentioned there, Ms. Rell, I, I really appreciate that. I, I am, I, I see some really comprehensive and very broad-based programs that were discussed here this evening. But when I look at the data that we saw, we saw substantial gaps within subsegments of our population. And what I'm interested in is to understand how we're targeting those populations. Because I, I didn't hear focus on those, on those populations.
Yep. Some of the targeted programs that we run, for example, are, are summer programming. We look at our data to target our students with the greatest academic need. And you'll also see often those correlate with, well, in this case, but based on our data, those completely correlate with our demographic groups that we're talking about. We have looked at, last summer for the, for, I don't know if it's the first time in PCCS and the first time since I've been in PCCS, we implemented high dosage tutoring. It is a very effective evidence-based strategy. So we implemented it in the summer. We've done some of that in some areas this fall, but we are expanding that this year. So we've been working to set up the framework behind the scenes to help support and grow, and teach our teachers how to do this work as well. And then we engage as well in, in a lot of different ways. So I, I think I've shared with the group, there'll be a time where we exceed our capacity within to do this. So we're also looking at what other national partners are out there that can do this work that we can help to leverage. Because we want to give our students and families every opportunity to have the supports that they need. One of our challenges this year is, in running comprehensive after-school programs, many of the students who have the greatest need also need transportation. And we have significant challenges with transportation this year. So as we look to now and near and in the future, the other thing we're, we will be doing is expanding those after-school programs, expanding our summer programs, or at least continuing the expansion of our summer programs, and looking to additional supports within our community and beyond. So family engagement is key for us. Focus groups of our families, because we also need to hear from our families, what needs do they have that we're not aware of? Because there are barriers that we may not even know about that we can help kind of break down for our families to better support our students. We're seeing a huge increase in social emotional needs. We have students with very, with, with a lot of, of needs that they bring to us. So we have done a lot of intentional work around that area. All of those things help support a strong foundation for our students to be ready to learn and engage in learning. Underneath all of that foundation is relationships. Ensuring that we have positive, strong, supportive relationships in our classrooms that are engaging in and supporting students' holistic needs. And as we engage in this work together, listening to what our students are saying about their experience is important for us too. So in focus groups, not only with families, but also with our students, to hear from them. What's their experience? How do we make it better? What's working for them? And what things should we be looking at doing differently?
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate that, that, that approach. On a related front, when we look at the data that, that Anthony shared, we saw progress in the, in the ELL. And I'm curious if that is correlated to our investments in ELL and the staffing that we did with ELL, or is it something else that we did?
So, yes and. So it is correlated with our, and Kimberly, if you want to come up and, and kind of share as well, come on up, so. And I'll let Kimberly speak kind of directly to some of the expansions, some of what we're seeing from the data. And also understand that our, our students who are identified as EL, that population has, has expanded exponentially over the last few years. So Kimberly, thanks for joining and sharing.
Good evening. Okay, good evening. Is that better? So to answer your question, Trustee Kehoe, yes, the investment has made a huge difference. And the, the reason why I can say that is because we are now able to have, at the elementary level, at least one ELD teacher in every one of our classrooms. I'm sorry, every one of our buildings. And so, as I've shared previously, and as Mrs. Rell has just said, while our population is growing, our population is so vast, meaning we get students that are newcomers, they're new to the country. We get students who are not newcomers, who are truly multilingual students where they're proficient in their home language and then they're learning English. We also have students that are coming to us or who have been in our program for a number of years who speak the social language very well, but struggle with the academic language, right? So now that we have our ELD teachers in our buildings, we're able to differentiate the support that we give to our students. So we utilize our ELD Paris as well. At the middle school level, we've been able to shift to a co-teaching model, right? Which allows the ELD teachers to be in the core content classrooms with our EL students, and they're able to not only support the instruction, but also support the planning as well as the assessment development. And so now at the high school level, we're looking to shift that, the model that we currently have, which is a, we have sheltered classes, and we're just finding that that's not working for our students. So we want to shift to a co-teaching model at the high school level because, to be perfectly honest, our EL students at the high school level, they want to be in the classrooms with their peers. They don't want to be singled out. They don't want to have to go to this class over here. They want to go with their friends. And so that's one piece of it, but then they also need the support when they're in those classrooms. So those are the pieces that we're looking at when we talk about what's, what's happening and what's working at the elementary, oh, I'm sorry, with the EL students. We also worked really hard to increase our family engagement, and that kind of blew up on us during the pandemic, right? We weren't able to host the various meetings that we were hosting prior to the pandemic, which not only included meetings for families to help them understand the instruction that was taking place, but we were also, we started to hold meetings, or I would say engagements, where our middle school students were able to, our eighth grade students, before they were doing their course selection for high school, we had a meeting with, for the eighth grade students, their parents to come in to talk about the classes that are offered at the park, to give them the various opportunities to participate in like CTE programmings at the park, not just the core or academic pieces. Then we were also able to host a family engagement evening for our high school students, our seniors, so that they had a smaller environment with college recruiters there to help them to understand, okay, this is what I- to help them to understand, okay, this is what I need to do to get into this college. We helped with their FASF paperwork, and we were moving into beginning to host a summer program to help with writing essays. And then, of course, we had the pandemic. So we're looking to pick all those things back up. So I think I answered your question, but I gave you a really long version.
No, that's okay, and I, I appreciate the, the depth. I'm not sure everybody else does, but I love the details. Towards that end, and to what Ms. Christensen said, you know, that's an area that we made investment. And I know that there's going to be challenges in hiring, but these are the things that we would like to have be brought forward. If those kinds of investments can be made to affect the ELL program further or to affect any of these other affected subgroups to help make this happen. I think that we'll stop wearing masks, but I don't think that the effects of the pandemic will be gone for a long time. The nature of the job market has changed, and we just have to make it so that Plymouth Canton is a destination where, where those people want to come. Because we're doing the right work and we're making the right investments. So I, I know that we are experiencing challenging in hiring right now, but I think that, that's not, just because we take our masks off, that's not gonna, that's not going to go away. So we need to make sure that we find creative ways to bring the right resources and to support the process. And we shouldn't be afraid to recognize that those investments need to be made and that we might need additional staff as part of the process. And I don't want to prescribe that. I want to recognize that as the experts, you guys make those recommendations, but know that the board is supportive. So I'll have other questions, but I'll go on from there.
Ms. Doo? Thank you. Can we go to slide 18, please? While we do that, and I will follow up on the ELD investment. In terms of, I'm getting the sense that it's based, it's a comprehensive approach that has been outlined by you, Ms. May, and the research-based strategies proven through PSYOP. So it's a targeted approach based on research-based strategies, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So one of my wonderings is, has the team looked at what intervention strategies, programs have been proven to be targeted at math and ELA to support our African-American youth? So you look at slide after slide, and if you just keep going, scrolling. I, I mean, I'm, I'm beyond words. This is my sixth year, and every year we see this. So we can't blame the pandemic. Yes, it's made it worse. But what are we doing differently to target this? What interventions, what strategies, what programs? I saw the slides with lots of great work happening. As you mentioned, Ms. Rail, what works, what doesn't? Has, has there been a detailed analysis of what's working, what's not? You can't keep adding more without taking stuff off of the shelf. So, I mean, one of the things I'd like to learn about is what's working and what's not. Because if it's not, let's move it off the shelf. And then when we talk about the investments in people, looking at the hiring of more coaches or deans, I would like to better understand, how is that investment directly tied to hitting those gaps? Because hiring more people in general is great. We'd love to have more teachers. We'd love to have more counselors. We'd love to have more social workers. But how are we targeting the support? Because we can't hire everybody. And so I have a lot of questions, but my biggest one is, has there been work done at your level, the team, to see what strategies, interventions, programs that are targeted to increase student achievement for African-American youth and students with IEP and the other subgroups that we're looking at?
So I'll speak to it, and then I'll also invite all members of the team to speak to it as well. But Monica, did you want to say something? Because I, okay. Okay, so there's, there's things that are called shallow level, you know, surface level, and then getting deeper and deeper. At the surface level, we look at things like, are we seeing representative materials in, in the classroom? Do students see literature in which they see themselves? As we get to deeper, we start to talk about those instructional practices. You hear us talk a lot about culturally responsive instructional practices. Those are specific to help support the needs of our young people, especially our students who are African-American. We have a lot of work to do to get more voice from our students about their experience. So Dr. Lilly has engaged in, as well as other members of our team, have engaged in some initial focus groups with student, with our Black students, to get some initial data, as well as the, you'll see some things in the findings of the research that Hanover has done with us, and the unpacking that we've done with that around some of root cause analyses. When we talk about collective teacher efficacy and having a champion in every classroom for our students who has a deep level of belief in our students and supports high levels of engagement, as we look at our data helping our students, helping our teachers create goals that are very targeted in their classrooms as well to support these areas. I'm going to invite other people, and then I'll add anything on that at the end, but I'm going to invite other teaching and learning members to add as well.
So kind of going back to a question that Mr. Kehoe had as well in regards to, what, what is, how do we know that these are the things we need to be doing? So inside of, I know I had a lot to say, there was a lot that I gave. All of those are research-based. All of those are the best practices that need to be happening. That's the work of the curriculum instruction team. I cited some research examples inside of there. Those are, those are the things that close the gap. Those are the things that need to be happening from a curriculum and instruction standpoint. Fidelity of implementation is something that needs to continue to be strengthened. Because we have it in Atlas doesn't mean it's automatically going to transfer into a classroom. So how do coaches support that work? Helping it get transferred into the classroom. That's how they support the closing of the gap. They're highly trained. They're targeted. They're specific. And they know well the best practices, as well as the curriculum coordinators here this evening. They know them. That is what's being put in. All those things I talked about are not random things that occurred by the curriculum instruction team. They are researched, discussed, decided, partnered. This is what needs to occur, based on, there's so many. There's, there's so many different pieces. It's not just one research place. Coaches help the implementation of those pieces. We have a fidelity of implementation with best practices. Is that, that's not, that's not consistent in all areas. One way to do that is by the utilization of coaches to help model, support, analyze what, what is supposed to be happening to go into classrooms. Maureen talked about the walkthroughs and being able to support job embedded at the building. We had started that work. It's on hiatus right now. That's a best practice. That needs to be occurring. Coaches help with that work, as do the curriculum coordinators. So I, I do feel like I put some research pieces in. We are looking at research. That is what we're doing, to do very specific, targeted. These are the things that need to be occurring. We do need to, to make sure that with fidelity, they are occurring in the classroom.
I think I'm speaking more specifically to our targeted groups.
I was going to add, I think more work needs to be done with the use of data within the classroom. So as we put these systems in place, research-based, how are our kids showing up in the classroom? When we say data and putting faces to data, if all we're doing is putting the data on the wall, but we're not using it, it's a poster. If our child is showing up in class and they're angry and not feeling respected, when you look at our Black students at times and you ask specifically, all of the work that we're dealing with or trying to work around our culturally responsive practices and ensuring that every student feels included. But if I'm having situations that systemically have me in the principal's office or maybe disproportionately suspend it, then how do I show up and be ready for your class? And so it's helping to make sure that we're giving our principals the tools to utilize the data, to give our teachers the tools. Number one, as you heard someone say, indicator of student success is a classroom teacher that's in front of them. So utilizing that data to get an individualized plan of support for each student that is in front of them. And so as a district, as we put, again, these systems in place, we have to drill that down to how does that impact each individual classroom student in front of you? And it's a culture shift as well to say, everybody doesn't get the same thing. Every student needs to get what they need to be successful. We've said it here at a board table. We've embedded it in a dynamic plan. But a, a plan without action will be here every single year. And so when you ask what that hope is, yes, we should be furious. Yes, we continue to talk about, but we have to, to funnel down that system to give our teachers the best support that they need for every individual student to make it happen. And I think that, I heard somebody talk about implementation. So we've put these systems in place, and now really we have to look at that data. And I remember, you know, a few years back, and I'll, I'll call you out, Dr. Lilly, when you talk about that intentional work of looking when things are going well. At field, as a focus school one year, you were required, we had to utilize that data, and there were so many gains. If you remember at this table, we, we talked about what was happening at that particular school at third grade with Black students, or what was happening at that particular school at whatever grade with, with students with disabilities. Because of that focus and the utilization of the data individualized to the students and targeting the interventions to help them meet those individualized goals, goal setting, kids having the opportunity to know, what goal am I working to achieve in this class? And how am I monitoring this along the way? And one of the supports that are in place, even from a, a building, principal's level, to ensure that this is, is, is taking place. How about parents? Are you treating, teaching parents how we're setting goals for our students and how to monitor progress along the way? And we saw some results, and that's the conversation where we said, now let's say what's happening well, again, utilizing that data to inform our decisions. And let's double down on that, and let's spread that across other areas. What's not working well? We cannot have sacred cows in this district. So when you say, what do you need? I remember many years ago when we talked about different interventions that we've had in place. Because we've always had them, people get upset if we say we need to move them. But if that's not working for all students, how do we shift those systems and do intervention differently? So that really is that next layer of work, that is difficult work. It has to be a commitment, that which gets monitored gets done. And so that's where the accountability comes, across the line, from boardroom to the classroom. And focusing, and specifically in terms of setting those goals, what does that look like? Not just collectively, but individually, is the way that we have to get there.
Yeah, I, I mean, you get it. And I think, moving forward, what I'd like to get more of is the investment that we're making and the outcome of that. What did the investment of the three additional counselors make? What was the outcome of that investment? Where did it work? Where did it not work? And if it didn't work, then how do we rethink that model?
Everything has to be strategic. So the ask for people, to your point. If we bring people without the plan, the monitoring, the, it's, it's a plan, act, uh, plan, study, do, act cycle. We have to continue to monitor and say, if this is working, everybody needs to know. When I'm coming in, this is specifically what I'm focused on. Because this is what the evidence or my data is saying is working in this area. I'm setting goals for this. I'm evaluating. If it's working, then I know I need to do more of that. If it's not, I need to abandon ship. Maybe we need to change. So that, that, to that piece, we, we do a lot which we appreciate, bringing people. But people have to be aligned with the, the plans. The need, the data, and then monitor and evaluate that it's worth the investment.
And much work has taken place over the last year to ensure that anything we bring to this board table has a plan, data, and intended outcomes and measurable opportunities within that. So everything that came through budget transformation last year had to have those things in place. We are now entering the second half of the school year where those were implemented. And the next steps are that they will be presenting that data to the teaching and learning team, and then our core team, because we are monitoring that data to see, is what we implemented working? Is the positivity project, are the additional counselors at the high school? Are the additional SEL supports, are they making a difference for our students? If so, what difference are they making? If not, what are we going to do differently to ensure that those, implementation of those interventions is appropriate and successful? Or what are we, what do we shift away from? So all of those things have to come with all of those intentional pieces in place before they're ever going to cross your plate as a board of education from our team.
You also heard a focus on early literacy and how our students are showing up to us. And at times are showing up to us with such large gaps, and then being able to work to, to catch them up. Sometimes those gaps get larger. And if you think about even an instructional coach, for example, 35A funded instructional coaches are, are supposed to be, according to third grade reading law, targeted for a specific function. An instructional coach is working with the teacher. One-on-one support should be that opportunity to work with that teacher on instructional practices, dealing with students individually. But often with everything else, we are pulled to different responsibilities. And that amount of time that they're able to actually focus on what they're intended to do, we're stretched. At this point, we're stretched because we have them in classrooms, filling, you know, some needs. So those are a lot of factors that are in play that we need, again, as we work to create this, the plan around the data, how we use the data, focusing on early, is early interventions right on. Because, again, how our students are coming to us, if we're not putting that targeted support there, those gaps are going to continue to increase as we're seeing happening day by day.
I have more, but President McQueen, I'll pass it on to the others.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure. So fantastic, you know, a lot of great information, amazing job. Really impressed with the amount of work. Obviously, you guys are working super hard, which I commend you for. So because of the time, I'm, I'm actually going to request some additional information, maybe even at a, a presentation, maybe even at a future board meeting. We're at the very least in, in board notes. But a, a couple of things, and some of my colleagues hit on it already. But what I would love to have seen was the, the tactics maybe organized a little bit differently. So there was a lot of redundancy by grade level, similar tactics, same kind of tactics. I would have loved to have seen them presented in a way that showed me how this tactic actually went throughout every grade level. And then these are other tactics that are specific to the grade levels, because then I could have seen the compounding effect. And so I would love to see something like that. I think it was, Mr. Kehoe will ask for more of an analysis of which tactics are working, why or why not? Or maybe it was Ms. Doo, I can't remember. But it, it would have been great to also see which tactics we stopped doing. Because sometimes, and obviously, you know, it's as important to understand what to stop doing as what to start doing. And then four additional categories. So one, a, a impact analysis. So I was trying to bring myself back to say, okay, if we do not close this gap, then what? So I would love to understand what happens to the students who are at the bottom of that gap, right? I'd love to understand if, if they're dropping out. If, I think Ms. Merritt alluded to their, you know, there's probably more behavioral issues. So I would love to see some data on that, just to understand the sense of urgency for us. Because otherwise, we're just really talking about numbers. And I think Ms. Merritt said it, you got to put a face to this. And so I think that that's really important. We have to understand the impact of analysis, but also not just on the students, but PCCS, community as a whole, right? So obviously, if we're seeing our enrollment decline, if there is an impact from a dropout standpoint, you know, that's a tactic to bring those, those numbers back up and, and revenue with it as well, right? So I think that that's important. And then the community, so obviously, we know where, where coming out of COVID and the workforce is different. So what impact does this gap analysis have on the community and the workforce as a, as a whole? So I would love to see something like that. And then a timeline, a couple of my colleagues alluded to this as well. You know, when do we project traction on these tactics, right? Somebody mentioned that it takes three to five years for some of these tactics to really take hold, right? So if we started, you know, really focusing on this work six years ago, which one of these tactics are starting to mature that we should really see taking hold in the, in the district? So I would love to see something like that. Also, can we quantify how much we're spending from an investment standpoint? And specifically where we're spending from an investment standpoint? Because that also is going to help us understand our ROI on where we're spending. And maybe we should be spending more over here than over here. And I think that goes to Ms. Christensen's question, as a board, as the fiduciary, that's what we want to understand is, where should we potentially be spending more dollars at or less dollars at to help impact this? And then from a, just an overall communication, obviously with the new dynamic plan, this is, you know, on the top of the list. So how do we actually increase the visibility around this? You know, instead of visiting it twice a year, something of that nature, is this a quarterly update? Is it, you know, more than that, less than that? I don't know, but I, I feel like because of our new dynamic plan, because of, you know, the sense of urgency around this, I feel like we should be revisiting this and the successes and, and, you know, the challenges and opportunities that are more. the challenges and opportunities on a more frequent basis. So, um, so those are not questions, just requests for more information at a, at a future board meeting, or at, you know, once again, at the very least, uh, in board notes.
Just to address that last piece, in terms of the action plans, every presentation as we move forward will be tied to those dynamic plan goals, strategic objectives. Um, so when we look at NWA, for example, because of the testing window, there's only certain times that you can report. But also conversations that we're having are multiple data points. So when you talk to the teacher, our students are showing up more than just NWA. Some people aren't blowing the test off, but what are they doing when you look at your BAS, when you're looking at the individual? So talking with the teachers, again, going to the data to know what's happening with each individual student within their classroom. And there are areas of success that our students, our black students are experiencing with their teachers. So having opportunities to showcase other areas where our students are growing, um, as well. But again, making sure that we're bringing forth, uh, progress on our work within our presentations that we're doing, um, as they align with the dynamic plan.
Yep.
So, so just one, one other thing, um, is to, to kind of the first point about the, uh, you know, the, the tactics and, and, you know, looking at which ones kind of go through each grade level. So I'm totally fine if you want to also include level by level, like in an appendix per se, because I don't want to take that away from Patrick. I know he loves that kind of stuff, so I don't want to take that from him. So, but maybe put in appendix so that he can look level by level.
One thing I want to speak to right now and, and is the commitment of the board and us to, uh, that, the new tool that we implemented called Panorama. So that, what you're asking about, about that impact analysis, that's what that tool helps us do. It looks at longitudinal data over time and the trajectory of what we've done and what we will be doing for our students. So we recognized as a team that was a key miss, missing tool for us, and so that's why we brought that tool forward. That tool helps us get that data about what interventions are working, what, are we implementing them with fidelity? And helps us with that data analysis. And that's, you know, as we continue our work together, we will share those findings, so.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, first, I, my, my, as I was listening, I was trying, trying to come up with a question about, uh, coaching. And, um, I think I was going to start out by asking what type of scenarios that you have between the teachers and coaches and how they work together and that. But by listening from a lot of you talking about it, just recently, I, I'd say maybe sixty percent of my questions were answered and that. So, um, what I want to, uh, talk about now is, um, with these coaches, um, helping out the teachers do what they need to do to present the materials and teach in a style that, that the, the kids can absorb all the, all what they want to do, um, are, are we investing in, in coaches so eventually we won't need coaches? Um, so the teachers will understand that, like, okay, I need to know this stuff first, so I don't really need to be coached on, on the information. And that, are we working towards, you know, like any other, any other support groups or, or people that we do hire in here? Do we want to just create more and more and more help and have teams? Or do we want to have it to a certain point where we can start reducing the, the, the coaching where, because we're not really needing it anymore? Because the teachers are learning more, the teachers are, are being able to present the, 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 uh, what they need to teach to the students and they get it. And it, and the, and the students' academic, you know, uh, improves quite a bit. So is that where we're going?
So I would tell you that education is evolutionary and that there will be need to support teachers. I don't think there's like a finite, all of a sudden, everybody is exactly perfect and we don't need that coaching support. We will also be hiring new teachers. That's, that is just a, a factor of, of working in education is that we hire new people. Um, a lot of coaching support, um, that is currently being done is with new teachers in, in order to, to, to help them. So I don't think that there's a, um, this is the date and, and we won't need coaches anymore at that point. Um, because we want teachers to continually grow. We're asking students to grow. We need educators who also have that growth mindset. Um, but it's also not, let's just expand coaches until there's one per, one per teacher. Like, that's not reasonable either. So, um, I think our, our current structure is, is a good structure to have. Um, there's, there's need for possibly an, another high school component for the number of teachers that one coach is, is trying to service is a lot. Um, but I don't think it's a, let's just keep growing it. That, that's not practical.
So is, is, is there education, uh, in the personal development, it going to help out more with the teachers not needing coaching? Or is that always going to be there?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand. Can you rephrase that?
Need for coaching a teacher in a, in, in a, um, the classroom.
So there's, there's many ways that instructional coaches help support teachers, one of which is with instructional practices. But another is when we roll out new, uh, resources, curriculum materials, curriculum, you know, so as, as Dr. Brady's talked about, you, let's say we roll out, um, uh, some additional supports in ELA, so literacy supports, reading supports. The coach sits side by side with the teacher and helps the teacher understand and unpack how to use those materials even more effectively. Coach also sits side by side with the teacher and looks at data and helps to develop those instructional plans. Those, um, you know, those academic support plans for students, individual plans for students. Coaches also can help model instructional practices, so they, we do some additional level of training for them so that they can help a variety of, of teachers in different ways. So think about it not as my own coach, but think about it as a cadre of instructional coaches that work with our teachers across the district based on the needs of the teachers and what we, what areas of support. This is not a punitive thing. This is a growth model. The growth model being, you know, throughout your career as an educator, there are areas where we always grow and expand and continuously learn in. And a coach can help support you in those roles. There's new curriculum. There's new instructional practices. Students, uh, you know, have a variety of different needs, so we do some intentional, um, training with our coaches. So for example, we did a lot of training with our coaches around, um, as, as Deirdre talked about, culturally responsive instruction through a coaching lens, right? So culturally responsive coaching. So that we help side by side our teachers on that journey.
Thanks.
So, um, this is a lot of data, um, to look at. I guess when I look at it, I, my, a lot of my concern is the middle school students. It seems like as the years go by, they seem to be losing more and more ground. And I guess my concern is that they're going to high school soon. And how is that impacting their high school performance? I mean, we have all these great opportunities at our high schools. But does this gap then impact what they're able to access at the high school? You know, as we expand these things, um, are we making sure that our kids are all able to access all of this? Because, you know, when you look at this, I mean, the, the gaps just, are just huge for, you know, African-American students, um, IEPs, you know? English learners not so much, but I guess it's that they just don't have time to, you know, three to five years to catch up. So what are we doing right now to really push some of these kids forward now? And get them ready for, you know, if they're in seventh grade, ninth grade, and, you know, a, a year and a half?
So the, the point that you bring up about the gaps increasing over time, like, that's the coordination, like Ms. Merritt talked about, between starting in different places and then, um, having, uh, not having a situation where, i- if you start behind, you need to grow more in order to shrink that gap. So when we talk about a focus on, on growing students and setting individual targeted goals, um, that's the way you begin to close, to close those gaps. So to your point about, you know, what are we doing short term? You know, it's, it's really looking at adding those academic supports in a targeted way. Um, the, and, and example of something that we've started that past couple of years and, and we've talked about in, in the summer programming, having that, uh, pre, that pre-algebra jumpstart, where we target students who, um, we know and are enrolled in Algebra I as a ninth grader, but struggled the second half, right? So we've scheduled students already, teachers have identified that they've struggled in the second semester of eighth grade math. And we try, we encourage them, and we have seats in a high school pre-algebra class for the second semester so that they're ready to start Algebra I as a ninth grader. That would be one very specific example in math. Um, but really, we're, we're also looking at very, a very specific racial achievement gap. And we're talking about for students with IEPs, a, a very specific achievement gap there. So for our students with IEPs, putting, making sure that we have in-class supports for students. So really making sure that we're focusing on a co-teaching model, that students have access to the curriculum, and they are supported in moving through, uh, um, the, their learning progressions and setting those goals, uh, and achieving those goals. And, you know, we actually had a conversation in our middle school principals meeting today, um, looking at, uh, data for our African-American students. And we talked about, um, what type of, what type of engagement do we have with those students to find out what they need, right? And we talked about, like, talking to students and talking to families to find out specifically where those needs are. So, you know, there's an academic component to it, but there's also an engagement. Like, you know, one of the things when we're looking at our panorama data, we're talking about, do our, uh, African-American students really feel like they see themselves in school? Do they feel like they belong in school? And we've talked about the difference between belonging to a club and belonging to a, a sport and feeling that affinity versus belonging to a school and feeling the affinity of, of that academic environment. So those are the conversations we're having in a targeted way, but it's just not a, it's not a one, uh, a one approach, right? There has to be a multiple layered approaches involving families we talked about today, having academic structures to support kids. But also, um, showing students, not just telling students, but showing students that we believe they are integral to this success of our school as a whole.
And to that end, I can continue to emphasize the early intervention. When you're looking at the question that you asked about middle school, and, and the focus on third grade, of course, is not a magic number in terms of learning to read. Everybody's not going to learn to read by third grade. It's still a continuum. But there is so much that takes place in those early years, and so we really do need to focus on closing those, the gap, those gaps early. Because as students continue and are not experiencing success as a fifth grader, as a sixth grader, then they begin to feel that they are not able to. And if they don't feel that they're able to be successful, they may show up in class in a different area. And so it really is not just about the focus on their goals, but also building capacity within our teachers for, for literacy and numeracy at those early ages. And when you get to fifth and sixth grade, and seventh grade, and eighth grade, and your gaps are getting bigger, yes, you're going to have barriers in terms of access and opportunities to advanced level coursework. And so that cycle will then continue.
Yes. So I guess I'm, because these are children who don't do, like, they don't get another seventh grade year. This is it. I'm just frustrated. Um, more, Ms. Christensen, do you have anything else?
No, no more comments.
Mr. Kehoe?
I have a lot of comments, but I'm not going to do them tonight. I'm, express your frustration. I, I will say one thing, and I appreciate the, the focus and attention on looking at different things, but we need to, we're, I, I've been on the board for six years, seven years, and I've continued to see the same things. So we, we've not moved the needle with the exception of ELL. And I would ask us to look at the things that we've done and the investments that we've made there and say, how can we repeat those kinds of patterns in our other subgroups?
Mr. Doo?
Given that it's late, um, I'll just say that I think we need to coordinate a team of eight workshop and continue this discussion in terms of where can we make some changes within the team of eight conversation, our goals, all the things that we've talked about. So I think, let's move this off to a workshop.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Brooks? All right. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, next up, we are on citizens' comments. Which will be a minute, if you can get our. Set back up. Before we start, I just want to remind everyone that these are a time for the school community to bring your, their concerns and feedback to the school board. Uh, it's not a back and forth, and questions are not answered during this time. Uh, each citizen will be allowed three minutes. Uh, when your name is called, please come up to the microphone. Mr. Brandon will be starting the timer, which will show up here. Keep your name and begin speaking at the end of the three minutes. Please wrap up your comments. And, uh, Kara Gavin will be first.
Hi, my name is Kara Gavin. I'm the mother of a seventh grader at West Middle School. I'm here to thank the board and administration for several recent actions regarding COVID and other health issues, and also to call for further action. First, thank you for a very smooth process to pick up the rapid tests from the backpack program on January twenty-fourth, and I hope it goes just as well tomorrow. Please keep this distribution up. While supplies of rapid tests at stores have improved and insurance reimbursement has begun, and government programs are getting some tests to people for free, the financial and logistical barriers for many families are very real. Second, please communicate to families that while COVID rates are declining fast locally, they are still well above CDC's high level, according to an update just posted today. Families may be hearing that other states are setting dates to roll back mask mandates in schools. Our district and our county made the right decision to use data, not dates, to guide mask policy changes, so thank you. I know several families, though, who have been very careful throughout the pandemic, but who have children in PCS, PCCS elementary schools, and those children brought the virus home from school in recent weeks. And having rapid tests on hand allowed those parents to make informed decisions about sending their children back to school. As I've said in previous citizen comments, our district should be leading the way by implementing a test-to-return program to ensure that still contagious students and staff do not return to school too soon after isolating. The CDC estimates that one in three people will still test positive on the fifth day of isolation. At the very least, recently returned staff and students should be kept away from others during unmasked time, uh, such as lunch. On the other side of the coin, I hope you can communicate to families that these rapid tests have their limitations early in an infection, especially in someone who's vaccinated and boosted. And for people who develop symptoms, it's better to start with a PCR test on that first day or two. And at the very, at least, someone with new symptoms whose first rapid test was negative should follow it up with a second rapid test a day or two later, just as the test kits say. Um, the supply of test kits should continue to, um, improve. Today, the state senate, uh, voted to free up more federal dollars to buy more tests for schools, and the state house is expected to do the same tomorrow. I hope you will please continue to access what the state is providing as the supply begins to flow. I also want to mention another recent development at the state level, the attorney general's statement that public meetings should make accommodations for people with disabilities by offering the ability to promote, participate via remote technology. I implore the board and administration to use the same technologies that our educators are to use and offer live streaming of all meetings and remote opportunities for citizens' comments. This would provide important equity, not only for those with disabilities and immunocompromising conditions, but also for individuals with evening work or childcare responsibility. Lastly, I want to thank the board for passing the recent resolution regarding safe firearm storage education, another issue where science-based efforts could really help reduce harm and prevent tragedy. Thank you.
All right. Uh, next up, we have Katie Bennett. Uh, next up, we have Katie Bennett.
Good evening. Tonight I'm speaking on behalf of more than 120 families and teachers who have formed the PCCS Return to Normal Advocacy Group. Our mission is simple, to advocate for a return to normal for all of the kids in the district. In the past month, there's been a growing national movement led by a thousand medical experts for a return to normalcy for our children. This effort is due to widespread access to vaccinations, Omicron being a milder variant, and a serious decline in our mental health of our children. I encourage every board member to visit the Urgency to Normal website and educate yourselves on what these medical experts are advising school boards to do at this point in the pandemic, not six months ago, but today. In addition, there have been articles in the New York Times, NPR, San Francisco Chronicle, Time Magazine, The Washington Post, The Atlantic, all written by or quoting various medical experts on the need for normalcy. I want to share a few of those quotes really quickly. Dr. Lena Wen, who I'm sure you've all seen, seen on CNN, most recently, her quotes have been, "Good health is not just the absence of COVID." And quote, "Why is it that children are still paying the price? Maybe it's time, beyond time actually, to let our children have a normal existence." And in The Atlantic this month, quote, "Over the past 21 months, slowly and with much resistance, the layers of mythology around COVID-19 mitigation in schools have been peeled away, each time without producing increases in COVID-19. Schools did not become hotspots when they reopened, nor when they reduced physical distancing, nor when they eliminated deep cleaning protocols. These layers were peeled away because evidence supporting them was weak, and they all had substantial downsides for children's education and health. However, this district continues a lot of those mitigation measures. Tonight, we are asking this administration to take the following actions. One, end the three-few distancing that prevents teachers from providing the best possible education and teaching and learning environment. Too many modifications are being made right now due to this distancing requirement, and as a result, teaching and best practices are not occurring. Number two, return to a normal lunch period where students can face each other, have more than 15 minutes to eat, are not timed, and can choose their own seat. A side note on this, the majority of your elementary kids have not had gym in two years in their gymnasiums because of your lunch mitigation measures. Number three, end the current mask and snack policy, where children are told to keep their mask on while eating snack, and provide children with a 10-minute mask break in the morning and a 10-minute mask break in the afternoon. Four, end the quarantine of all objects that are inside the school or brought into the school, including books. You are still sending out emails in this district asking parents to quarantine things and having teachers quarantine things. COVID does not live on objects, this is not 2020. Number five, end the indoor recess policy that currently requires children to sit at their desks for 40-plus minutes per day and discourages kids from playing with friends and moving around the classroom. Six, end the current no visitor policy and open up doors to parents who have not been in your classrooms in two years. In addition, allow for students to go on field trips, attend building-wide assemblies, and allow for after-school events. There's no reason why high school athletes can go play sports while elementary kids still have zero social events after school. Each of these requests are, I'm almost on a promise, each of these requests are district policies, building policies, and teacher policies. None of what we are asking to change goes against a Health Department mandate. Everything we are requesting is happening in other schools in Wayne County. And I want to repeat that, everything we are asking is happening in other schools in this county and in this country and in this state. We have a 72% vaccination rate in this community. Some elementary school census tracts have an above 80% vaccination rate in their community. All children can be vaccinated, all teachers can be boosted. The Omicron surge is over. You have the power to give our kids a normal school day. We, parents, are asking you to give that to them now. Thank you.
All right, and then, and then we have Amanda Crink, Crinky, sorry.
Sorry, I'm used to talking to smaller children. Okay, it goes without saying that the last two years have presented unique and extraordinary challenges to educational institutions. Fortunately, we have come to a place in our community that schools can remove barriers to student success that our school board and administrators have placed on our children's academic and social emotional development. As a substitute teacher in the district over the past four years, including all of the pandemic, I was not at all surprised by the achievement data you shared tonight. Some of the most basic attributes of effective teaching and learning practices have been missing from most, maybe all, K-5 classrooms. Some of those are collaboration, hands-on activities, project-based learning, small groups, and parent involvement, all of which you heard Dr. Brady emphasize were important for closing your achievement gaps. Don't get me wrong, teachers are trying very hard to accommodate the unfair and unnecessary restrictions, but even the best of the best cannot make up for the deficits created by forced social distancing and other mitigations. Sorry, I remember my first time subbing in the fall of 2020 when our classes were hybrid, if you remember. Between the morning and afternoon classes, I sobbed, ugly cried. It was a terrible feeling to see the bare and isolated classroom conditions. I was so stressed, how long am I near a student? Am I too close? Like, how long, like, timing to see, like, how long you were next to someone? Then I remember one of the new students was crying, and I couldn't hug her. It was incredibly hard and difficult. I remember I kept thinking to myself, like, how long can this possibly last? Fast forward to 2022, we have easy access to vaccines, we have a less severe Omicron variant, and study after study, expert after expert telling us that children have a miniscule risk of serious illness from COVID, vaccinated or not, and should have normalcy. The New York Times even stating that a boosted adult is nearly three times more likely to die from the flu or pneumonia than they are from COVID. Stadiums are sold out, restaurants are packed, travel is booming, youth sports and activities are in full swing. All incredible news, and we would all be thrilled to hear this back in 2020 because we would think our classrooms would now be full of smiling faces. Science experiments, group presentations, talent shows, fun fairs, field trips, Mother's Day's teas, dads with donuts. But what is our current reality? We have PCCS elementary schools telling kids they have to quarantine Valentine's because they could give a friend or a loved one COVID. Students stuck at their desks for roughly five and a half hours a day. Gym class in classrooms, plexiglass-lined offices, preschool students coming back from quarantine have to isolate at a separate table from their peers, which could be up to, my kid's coming for five days, maybe six hours of their school week separated from their classmates, three- and four-year-olds. Think about that, please. It is truly sad, and I often feel jealous and frustrated that most children in schools all around us, all around us, are not enduring the same unhealthy and damaging protocols. I feel like I'm failing as a parent, I feel like I'm failing as a teacher every time I'm in a classroom and maintaining these ridiculous and unjustified measures. I urge you to make a change.
All right, thank you. Now we are down to action items and discussion. The first up, we have action item 220246, consider approval of a resolution to adopt the 2021-2027 Plymouth Canton Community Schools Dynamic Plan Final Reading.
Madam President, I move that we approve action item number 22-02-46, approval of a resolution to adopt the 2021 through 2027 Plymouth Canton Community Schools Dynamic Plan Final Reading.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, it was moved by Member Stu and seconded by Member Keough. Does anybody have any questions about this, any comments?
We've talked about it extensively, I'm excited to finally bring it forward to conclusion.
I have, and again, thank you to your entire team, Superintendent Merritt, who worked so diligently on this through our many questions. All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right. The next thing we have is action item 220247, consider approval of a resolution, designate a representative to vote for MASP Region 8 Board of Directors, three-year term. First and final reading, does anybody have a candidate they would like to bring forward? All right, so I, I propose that we, we designate Angie Smith from Farmington as our, who we will vote for. She's been in, she has worked for public schools, she's been an active parent. I feel like she would make a good choice and perhaps not. I feel like she would ask a lot of questions and maybe bring up issues that need to be brought up at the MASP Board of Directors.
I don't have any specific experience with any of these candidates, but in reading the, the profiles of them, I also was interested in Melandi.
Melandi.
Melandi Hines.
Melandi Hines.
I thought the things that she spoke with respect to equity and funding and the approaches that she was taking were aligned with the things that we were doing as a district. But again, I have no specific knowledge of any of the candidates.
I, I really don't either, I was just reading it. Any others? So, I mean, we can pick Melandi, I'd be okay with that. I've met her before.
Okay.
She's at Wayne Westland. Oh, it's the same as May left her, left. All right, so then, where's our resolution? Oh, where did our resolution go? So. It's going to open? So then, the resolution would be, oh, I need a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution, resolution designating a representative to vote for MASP Region 8 Board of Directors, three-year term, first and final reading, action item 220247.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Wilson, and the resolution is, it was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Wilson to designate Diane Robertson, Executive Secretary to the Superintendent, to cast a vote on behalf of the board for Melandi Hines to represent Region 8 for a three-year term on the Michigan Association of School Boards, MASP Board of Directors. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right. So thank you, Ms. Robertson, we'll be taking care of that. Were we doing this tonight also?
Yes, I would like to, it's, to add this to the discussion. I shared with you in board notes, it's a call to action by K-12 Alliance. Looking right now, the IDEA Full Funding Act of 2021, K-12 Alliance is planning on going to Washington DC in March to really advocate for Congress to support this bill moving forward. For just some history, when we look at IDEA, when it was established in 1975, this was a commitment on the federal government's part to support schools with reimbursement of up to 40% of funding to educate, to adequately educate the additional costs associated with educating students with special needs. And as of today, the federal investment in IDEA has been less than 14%. And really, that is time to change. So it's really encouraging to see this IDEA Full Funding Act of 2021. And in this act, it would require yearly increases to funding for IDEA programs so that the federal government reaches an annual appropriation of the 40% that was originally promised in 1975, and this would take place over a 10-year period. And so K-12 Alliance is really seeking local school districts to come in support of this so that they can make, bring forward some resolutions. They have shared a sample resolution in support of this full funding act, and I shared that with you for reading, I don't know if you want to share that out loud. But if this is something that you would be interested in supporting, which I would 100% recommend, it is long overdue, I would like to bring this back to the next board meeting and put it on the agenda for consideration as a first and final read so that we would have that to go forward with them to Washington DC in March.
I assume you don't have a resolution ready right now, correct?
I do not, no.
Okay.
Because we hadn't had an opportunity to discuss it, I got it Friday after word pack, and it had already gone out.
I support this. The MASP Resolution and Bylaws Committee met last week. They also have a resolution, not as detailed, but outlining the same thing. So I think having a statewide alignment with a resolution like this, I fully support.
Absolutely. It's really encouraging right now to just see the first blush at the governor's budget, and we know that things change, but looking at really another significant investment in schools, I'm looking at more indication towards the, not full-weighted formula, but the idea behind the research collaborative. And I think this, on a federal level, is still indicative of the supports that we need and hopefully heading in the right direction in terms of those additional costs for supporting and giving all students what they need to be successful.
Especially if you look at this estimated cost, expense is $13,828, and we get $8,700.
That's right, that's right.
That's $5,000.
That's right, and the original idea was that there would be 40% reimbursement. At this point, we've only had 14, so all local school districts are carrying the costs and becoming yet another unfunded mandate.
And when you look at the needs, we, when we looked at the gaps with our students with IEPs, we have major work to do, a lot of work to do to support our students better, and this funding will help with that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, and our cost, our average cost for special education is substantially higher than this. So average cost, this might be.
Average.
Yeah, this might be fine on a national basis, but even our average is substantially higher than this. So this would make a big difference in, in our funding levels.
All right, so we will actually get a resolution together with putting Plymouth Canton in that, and we'll bring it forward at the next meeting and ask for a first and final reading, and I will share it with them to go to Washington. Appreciate your support.
Great, thank you.
So the next is the follow-up board questions. At the last meeting, we had a question about, Member Chastain wanted the link for the US News and World Reports, we got that in board notes. And then, Mr. Keough and I want, were interested in finding about funding for the early, middle, college program.
Correct, and so what I'd like to do is set up a time later this month because, you know, right now, we're, we're really deep in.
Yeah.
Analysis, especially because the grading window closed. So if it, if it's amenable to you, we'll look at a, a date later this month, or we can come together virtually and, and just kind of review the budget around early, middle, college and, and show the trajectory and what that, the full disclosure on all costs on, around that program are. And then the return on investment that we're hoping for.
Can you include me in that meeting as well, when you send it out to President McCoy and Member Keough?
Yep, it'll come out through Superintendent Merritt, so we'll make sure that we.
All right, and Mr. Wilson has emailed his follow-up questions for tonight.
Well, actually, I think those questions could probably be a part of the workshop.
Yeah.
That'll probably be there.
Yeah, we could set that up too.
If you could do a workshop on this.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to get our.
Another date.
Yeah, our availability. All right.
On that note, do we want to be talking about availability?
Um, do you want to do that now?
Not necessarily for that workshop, but you had had some dates that you wanted us to talk about for other meetings.
So we did have a date for superintendent evaluation that is dependent mostly on when Superintendent Merritt is available. Because she's going to check, she's going to be checking with Karen Cross about her availability. So we'll have to pick meetings for our board governance based on when Ms. Cross is available.
Do we have any proposed dates, or?
No.
Okay, I'm just, I have a lot of stuff going on, so I'm just trying to make sure that I can, if, if there's something that we know that we're trying to reserve, I can lock it in. But if we don't know proposed dates yet, then it is what it is.
I think you shared some proposed dates.
No, I think you shared only dates of, these are the things that are going on, so the whole calendar's open, so.
So Ms. Stu shared some dates for a forum, a possible forum.
We've talked about a community forum for quite a while, and I think it's time to just put a date out there and get some involvement.
Okay.
Yeah, so she put out dates of the 10, the 3rd, which is FNO, 10th, 15th, and 16th. So.
So let's forget the, March.
March.
The forum, is it 12, full board, three board members?
Three, no more than three, and Superintendent Merritt and anybody from her team if she decides.
And then ideally, we would do, continue to do these, and then the other members could share that, that fund.
You proposed 3rd, the 10th, the 3rd is bad, the 10th and the.
10th, 15th, 16th.
What time?
This would be in the evening, so I would, whoever's available, I would say 6:00 or 7:00, so families can attend.
I'd be interested in doing something, you know, 15th or 16th, that would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, those are okay with that, so, yeah.
All right.
So 15th, let's, 15th and 16th, so Ms. Merritt, can we look at some rooms available for 15th or 16th?
One of the things we might consider is, you know, talking about the upcoming budget process and sharing with the community what we're doing there, and then, of course, the work that's happening with the dynamic plan.
Dynamic plan, right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it, I got a lot of. I mean, it, I got a lot of stuff going on, so if you don't need me, that's fine. I'm fine to bow out.
All right, so that's community forum. We'll check dates for fifteenth, sixteenth in terms of room and availability.
Yes.
And then do you want to look for a, I need to, Ms. Cross, she wrote me today, she said she has flexibility, she doesn't have, didn't share dates. So why don't we share some dates that you all are available, and then see if that will, and are, are you looking for February or March?
I mean, if we can do the last week of February and then move into early March.
So the last week in February, we would have a meeting the twenty-second?
Okay.
And that, that is it, I believe, for that week.
And Monday is the holiday, the twenty-first.
Yes.
I think it's midwinter break.
It is.
Oh, that's...
President's Day and midwinter break.
Yep. How much time does this district get off?
We get the eighteenth and the twenty-first.
Well, it's only the twenty-first, it's the actual, it's the eighteenth, I think it's a PD day.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the students are off on the eighteenth.
But the staff is out here.
Correct.
So would Wednesday, the twenty-third be a possible date for everyone?
That'd be great for me.
Yeah.
As long as it's after six o'clock or after.
All right. So six?
Yeah, six o'clock or after, anytime.
Okay.
All right, want to look at the following week of the twenty-eighth?
We have unfinished instruction task force on Monday. We have the SPA on Wednesday and FNO on Thursday.
So maybe let's move to the next week?
I mean, we can do, I could do Tuesday in the evening, so it's just, I'm just...
March one?
Yeah.
Okay.
March one, all right.
I'm just, Wednesday and Thursday are bad, and Monday's bad. But Tuesday would work fine for me.
Same.
March first?
Yes.
Potential dates. They're gonna, they're gonna cross-check them.
All right, want to move to the week of the seventh and get some potential? We just have a board meeting on the eighth.
My only availability that week would be the ninth.
I can do the ninth after six PM.
I can do the ninth.
I'm not available on the ninth.
You're not available? Okay.
So the ninth is out.
So then, if we could, we looked at fifteenth, fifteenth or sixteenth for the community forum.
Yeah.
Can we pick one for the community forum based on availability of space and use the other one for the supervaluation? Okay.
Sure.
So, I am not available the sixteenth, so if we could pencil the fifteenth for all of us to be together for evaluation, it would work better for me.
Got it, okay. That sounds good.
Well, that's a good idea.
Fifteenth for the forum?
No, it would be the sixteenth, because Ms. Christensen is only available on the fifteenth.
So the sixteenth would be a potential date for community forum, assuming she's not participating.
I would not be.
The room is available on both days.
Okay, so if we say the sixteenth, we could, community forum, March sixteenth.
Yeah.
And then, some potential dates so far that I have are February, the twenty-third, Wednesday after six, March the first, Tuesday after six, March the fifteenth after six.
Yes.
Do we want any more? Because it's a couple of things. Here, evaluation, we also need board governance, working with Ms. Cross around core principles, operating procedures. You all wanted to do your own goals.
How many meetings do we have?
Right now, we have three dates.
But how many meetings do we need to do?
That'd be three meetings.
So Superintendent...
Well, that would, actually, it'd be two meetings.
We only need two meetings, and we've got three dates available.
Yeah, three dates available.
Then I think, I don't know, I don't know if you need more dates if, if, because some of those meetings are just with us. We only need Ms. Cross for one of those, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
If the rest of us are available, the other ones, we should be fine.
All right, so, this comes to the end of our agenda?
I'd like to just bring up one other item.
Okay.
February twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh is the MASP Virtual Conference. It is a live virtual conference. If anybody's interested, I guess I'll send an email to Diane.
All right, anybody else? All right, meeting is adjourned. It is eleven sixteen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for the reminder.
Yes, they sent...
No, you can attend parts or just this afternoon.
Yeah, and they send it, they send it out, too, after they're done.
You retired?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Glad you're here.
You fooled me at the last... How was it? When did you, when was your last day?
Wednesday was the last day.
Oh, so you've had like a whole week on it? And does it feel like a vacation, or does it feel like a whole new thing?
Me too, thank you.
It's insane, and I can't even like...
Pardon me?
You sleep until three o'clock in the afternoon? Then you go back to bed.
Yeah. Um, it's hard because you find purpose in your work.
I don't know.
Too close to this one.
Because I'm doing the MASP board work, so I'm... Imagine all of a sudden, one day, like, three new workshops. It's crazy.
They're gonna cart me out. They're gonna cart me out. Like, I like my work. I, I cannot imagine not having... Like, when we go on vacation, if, like, we go on a beach, I can sit down for about fifteen minutes, and then I gotta go do something, like, I dig a big hole, or I put on a rock, or do something. I, I cannot just sit.
So I did start a dance class. And this North Indian dance class, so I'm gonna try to do things that I always said I didn't have time to do, which is sleep, exercise, dance, cook, you know, more community involvement.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We'll throw a party in the square.